Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the PNP meeting to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Flag is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, under communication, Carol's running over to grab the sign in sheet. So, we're open for public comment. Thank you. Okay, first on the list is Kevin Horowitz on the calendar committee. That's a, oh, any one of those mics. Hi Kevin.
All right, hello, good evening. My name is Kevin Horowitz. I have a junior at Vernon Hills High School and a sixth grader on the way. And I wanted to just talk about the calendar that I know it looks like it's going to be voted for, if not this meeting, the next meeting, for the next several years. And it was about this time last year where we had removed the religious holidays from the calendar in favor of an operational calendar. And at the time, it was based on survey data. And now, at this time, we have a little more data, having had Rosh Hashanah, having just had Diwali. And, you know, I'm not sure exactly when Eid is. It may be after the school year gets out, but we might have that data in the spring, early summer. And so, it's just important that, I hope, that data will be analyzed and used as part of this process to see if any of the thresholds were indeed met. The thresholds for both students at 75% and the staff at 88%, I believe that was the thresholds that were recommended this past year. Well, I certainly would love to, you know, re-discuss whether the operational calendar is in the best interest of this community. I certainly want to meet you guys where we are right now and just make sure that that data is being used to determine if indeed a threshold was met, that we have the data to take the day off in the future. I want to also comment that Yom Kippur was on the weekend this past year. So, we don't have specifically that Yom Kippur data, but what we do know is that Yom Kippur is the holiest day of the Jewish calendar and a day with more restrictions. And as a result, we can expect more kids to take off. So, if the thresholds of Rosh Hashanah were very close, understanding the difference between those two holidays could be potentially enough to legally say operationally, we're going to need to take Yom Kippur off, which next year does fall during the weekday. So, I just want to ask that these, this new data, that's just, you know, came in the past month for Rosh Hashanah and Diwali be used by the calendar to analyze it. If that has not been done yet, I will ask that that please is done. And I would really appreciate if some of those metric data would be shared with the staff, with the community. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sakrtes?
Thank you for letting me speak today. I have a child in Vernon Hills High School and one on the way, hopefully next year. Just want to congratulate Batson on his new role and good luck. I thought at last meeting, you asked for people's patience and I thought that was very classy for you to do that. I hope you mean it. You've been here a long time. You know what works, you know what doesn't work. All of us here moved into District 128 a long time ago. Clearly, we were attracted to what's here. You, I don't know how long you've been, but I know you know what the sauce is, what drew all of us into D-128. And so, I wish you the best and I hope that whatever's had been happening, you know, when it started, maybe during the pandemic, you know, maybe before that is where the sauce was at. And hopefully, you can dig into your mind and try to get us back to that point. You know, we might have needed some things to change, but it seems, it feels like, right? As Mr. Kelly would always say, feelings, feelings, feelings. I'm a physical scientist, so, but it almost feels like there was something happened, you know, somewhere there was a transition. And so, hopefully, you can dig deep and figure out where the switch was flipped and get us back to those days. The three-minute thing, I think it's been mentioned before. I believe it was started during the pandemic. It's not a really nice way to communicate with you all. I understand that at that time, there's a lot of people that they were trying to voice their concerns and if you let people go on and ramble on, you'd be going home probably at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. But I like to implore all of you or whoever makes the decision to maybe loosen up on that three-minute thing because it's not easy getting up here and talking to you all. And when you have that clock beating in the back of your neck, it's hard. So, hopefully, maybe we can slide back to when it was in three minutes. You know, as the librarian last meeting pointed out, that it's kind of a fundamental human right to be able to speak and to be able to be heard. It's really tough again to do it in three minutes and all that. So, hopefully, I thought she hit the nail right on the head with that. As far as looking for superintendents, I think you should broaden your scope and not just focus on established seasoned superintendents. You know, look at current assistant superintendents at different schools. So, just, I'm just hoping that you're not just laser focused on current successful superintendents. I think it would be beneficial to open it up to less experienced. That's the thing. Lastly, if I can ask you for 30 seconds. Your council and I believe it's been pointed out that this switch that I talked to you about maybe two minutes ago, I feel it could be because of all the surveys that have been going on over the past four years. And if a survey is participated by a lot of people in the community, it's a good survey. But if you don't have a lot of people participating in the survey and then you take marching orders from that survey, it might lead us into a bad direction. And that could be one of the switches that was flipped during the pandemic where we were going off on this tangent based on what the surveys are telling us. And secondly, I think our council, the council of D-128 uses, I don't know how long that person or firm has been employed by D-128. I really believe they've been giving not the best advice to you all. And that might also be another switch why we have such animosity towards some of the board members. So, it might be something to reevaluate for next year. I don't know when that contract is up, but you might want to start looking at new represent, new council to represent D-128. Lastly, I will say, LHS is looking great. I know some of the survey money that I started coming up here to talk to you about, I asked you to please put the money towards LHS and I think from last meeting, a lot of students were really happy to see what's going on in LHS. And so, continue that. I think the voices of the students speak volumes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sakrtes. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
Good evening, Marnie Navarro, lifelong Libertyville resident, proud District 70 and 128 graduate. I just want to touch on a couple of things. I spoke to you at the last board meeting. Unfortunately, the sound and mics were problematic again and I got cut or talked over at the end. So, I just wanted to finish my point. As we spoke, the report cards, state report cards came out this week showing that District 128 now has $103 million annual budget. We are now up to spending $30,000 per student per year. Yet, we have declining enrollment, declining standardized test scores, as we'll hear tonight during the presentation, as borne out by the PSAT scores. Just wanted to focus again that our community wants to restore focus on academic credibility, return to a standardized grading system and restoring academic rigor to District 128. Also, at the last board meeting, there was a lengthy update on the APA and heterogeneous classrooms. The big elephant in the room that was not spoken of and addressed, I've emailed you all extensively, or at least the board members about this, is that we didn't have to do any of it and we still don't have to. That was a creation, I believe, of former superintendent Denise Herman, who got it wrong on the law. And so, now we were put into a very unfortunate position of learning in March that there was no plan in place. And I believe certain members have done an incredible Herculean job of attempting to cobble together a system and build a plane while we're flying it. But it was disappointing to hear that we're charging ahead and not only continuing, but expanding the rollout of this version of APA and heterogeneous classrooms. I think that we need to pause and meaningfully reevaluate with real metrics the impact and whether it serves our students. As I mentioned, there's going to be a presentation later this evening about the standardized test scores, which reflect that they are down. PSAT scores are down across multiple grades. It's going to be further muddled by the transition, not just our district statewide, from PSAT to ACT. So, that's going to be very difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison. So, I think that's something we should be cognizant of as we are, you know, celebrating victories that when you dumb down a test or dumb down grading system or curriculum to make it look better, that it's not necessarily true. It also bears out the data we're going to see tonight that our 20% of students with special needs and IEPs are the most numerous and among the most numerous and underserved and underfunded subpopulation. So, I would urge this board to focus on the actual needs of our actual students as opposed to hypothetical constituency that is not applicable to us. Finally, superintendent search, I note that we have our one-hour sessions this week, Wednesday and Thursday, one hour each at Vernon Hills and Libertyville High School. It feels like a last minute, late in the game, check the box versus a meaningful opportunity for real community input. The AP course enrollment in the presentation we're going to see today, we certainly see there's a lot more kids taking AP classes and a lot of kids taking more AP courses. I do want the community to note that there is, that's not necessarily a victory in and of itself. The district gets credit for how many bodies are in seats in AP courses as opposed to their actual score. I would hope that we do a more comprehensive evaluation as to quote "success." If students are failing the course or super stressed out and doing poorly with their mental health, is that really, is it really a win, particularly when there's not existing MTSS in place? Five of seven District 128 board seats are up for election on April 1st. I'm proud to announce that I'm running for one of those seats and I appreciate all of your service and look forward to hearing the rest of the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
Good evening, John Hetzel. I was planning on speaking before the FNF after the academic performance came about, but I'm going to do it now. First of all, why is the academic performance in the PNP meeting? Why isn't it in the general board meeting? It seems like it should be there and it seems that this is possibly intentional to hide it from the majority of the public because it does show a regression in scores. And that's the second year in a row. Larry Varn last year, if I'm not mistaken, at this time also showed that math and reading scores had regressed. So, now we have two years in a row. I'd please like to have you explain it to the community and parents at the next BOE meeting. So, these questions that I'm asking, I want answers for it and I think the community needs to hear them as well. Data last meeting showed that 130 freshmen dropped down from APA. How many actually had automatically been moved up before school start? That information wasn't provided, Mr. Kalanthus. It would be really nice to see how many were actually pushed up. And then, if 130 dropped down and you've got approximately 400 students, that doesn't look really good. Seems like you're hiding that info too. Please explain to the community and parents at the next BOE meeting. Also, the data shows that the math and reading scores are down again this year, just like last year, as I mentioned. Early indicators are showing that the AP classes may result in lower grades come December as well. So, how much longer are we going to continue to promote this ideology over academics? Because current policy literally is dropping our kids' GPAs, which is a metric used by colleges. And this is after allowing retakes and makeups implemented post-pandemic. So, that's two years in a row. Combined with three or four grading systems changed in the last three years and still no standardized grading, it's all over the map with every teacher. When is this board going to shift the district's strategy and tactics and start focusing on more on academics versus the ideology that's being presented daily here, consistently being imposed on our kids? Please explain to the community and parents at the next board meeting. Varsity tutors, last meeting, the MTSS progress was listed and it showed what I believe was some dismal participation in the ARC and MASH data as it was presented. But how many kids comparatively, year over year, went to ARC MASH compared to last year and this year? Let's see that data. How come it's not available? Same with varsity tutors, which zero data has been provided, but that was one of your pillars of your MTSS, that there would be varsity tutors. How many kids are actually contacting varsity tutors and why hasn't that data been provided? Again, it seems like you're hiding the data because it doesn't seem like the metrics are probably going to be very good. We have consistently called out the MTSS plan was sketchy at best and not even a plan in April after several years of Herman blowing it off. Now, it appears for a second year in a row, math and reading scores are regressing. It's time to stop wasting important resources on the ideology platforms and more resources directed on academics. Start by cutting bloated administrative staff and shore up resources to academics. We need measurable results as listed in your strategy pamphlet sent out. And so far, it feels like we're spending money still recklessly on things like a DEI staff and other ideological platforms that are not producing results and there is no return on the investment. And we are not getting improved test scores as a result of it. So, let's get focused back on academics. Stop wasting $100 million budget. We are the taxpayers and to some degree, you report to us, but you act like you don't, like you're above everybody else. Let me frame this a little better for you. The state only accounts for a few percentage points of the overall budget. So, why are you adhering to all these ISBE guidelines with our taxpayer money? Let's let it go. Please explain to the community at the next board meeting. Academics over ideology always will win.
John, I have a quick question. If you could just repeat the first, the first point you wanted clarification on in your public comment. I just want to take a note so we can make sure to clarify that. As opposed to... Got it, thank you.
Program and personnel, so. Thank you. All right, moving on. For discussion, first item is employment of employees. Turn that over to Bryant.
We have a few coaching action items that will be forwarded to the board meeting on the consent agenda.
Yeah, it's all coaches. Are there any questions, anyone? Okay, moving on to educational tour requests.
There were two requests submitted for the board's consideration this cycle.
It seems like the gymnastics one is too short.
Too short?
Yeah, I mean, they go out on a Friday and they come back on a Saturday morning, like...
Yeah, like a quick turnaround.
Too short, yeah. Are there any questions or comments?
I don't have any about either of the tours. I just had a request to clarify the procedures that are in place at the building level to ensure equitable access to all of these opportunities. I know that we have, we have implemented the theory that there is fundraising for all of the ed chores. Some of them are quite costly. And in order to ensure equitable access to these opportunities, in addition to fundraising, I believe that we encourage students, if they have a financial challenge and they do want to participate, to talk to the teacher or the coach or the sponsor or their counselor. So, I think we're doing the right thing. But I would really like to confirm that we have a systemic approach to that work and that we have actual building-level procedures in place. It's possible that we do have those procedures, but I would like you to report back to the board what those are. If there aren't codified procedures to ensure that equitable access, I would like there to be a recommendation developed to have a formal procedure or not board policy, because we do have board policies that address it, but a lowercase p policy so that we have a systemic approach that's consistent throughout our buildings.
Is that listed in administrative procedures instead of policy, that's that?
No, we would need to develop something that provides that guidance. We have a lot of different programs with longstanding practices and a general expectation that fundraising is provided for all, but nothing that is written down that would kind of lay that out in any kind of standard or consistent process for the entire district. So, that would be something our team would need to work on.
Okay. I just want to confirm, I don't want it to be a directive coming from me and that we have board consensus to develop something to demonstrate our commitment to that equitable access to those resources.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. We should look at that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to the student academic measures update number one.
Yeah, and actually, this is number two because we have created three meetings in a row to focus on our academic performance. Next board meeting, we will talk about the SAT and our school report card. The last meeting was about some of our academic performance updates regarding our, some of the response to our MTSS system and our ninth grade performance. Tonight, we are sharing an overview of some of the preliminary data that we've gathered with our standardized testing data. And this presentation historically has been done to talk about the academic performance measures that are not part of the state report card. So, there are many, many types of academic information and data that we're always collecting. And we share out a large portion of that with the board over a series of a few meetings. This tonight is for us to talk about our STAR reading and math assessments, our PSAT 8, 9, and PSAT 10, and our advanced placement exams. We will go into detail about our state report card on the next board meeting and that will go in depth on our SAT data because that is what is used as a state accountability test. So, we have STAR reading and math and this is an important test that we purchase. It is so that we have a universal screener. And universal screeners are a key component for a comprehensive assessment system and of an MTSS system. We've had STAR in place in our district for a few years, but what we are doing is expanding its use and becoming more sophisticated in the way that we use it and expanding its use, not just in broader populations of students, but in the way teachers are using the data. We use this to help identify students, we use the STAR to help us identify students who may need intervention support. We also use this as a reference point when thinking about some of the course selections a student may take. And we use this for broad-scale kind of curriculum assessments as well. STAR assessments in reading and math, they are given in the fall and in the spring to all ninth through 12th grade students, almost all. We don't give this test to some of our highest performing students in the 11th and 12th grade because they've essentially tested out of the STAR at that point. And for them to sit and take this test, to just be told they've exceeded the STAR's range of scores, isn't a good use of their time. Yeah, or a freshman, if a freshman's in an advanced level course that's generally for juniors and seniors, they wouldn't take it. The STAR is given by a specific class. It's not given by, like, to students. It's the teacher in a class gives the assessment and the scores are linked to the class. So, yeah.
I think it would be helpful, since not everybody speaks educinice, that we understand that the universal screener is order, is used to identify those students that need intervention or acceleration, right? So, it's not, I mean, that is the purpose of using the universal screener. It's not a measure of performance. It is an identifier for those students that we have created this MTSS system. So, as much as it does give us some information about what they can control, it is not about performance based on instruction that they've already had.
Yes, I think that's a correct way to describe it, absolutely. And so, what we would say with this is that the other thing that's good about STAR for us is that while we give it to all students in fall and spring, we also give some of the student populations that we're closely monitoring the test in the winter and we get three progress checks. We also have some of our foundational schools using STAR, so we get some longitudinal data from some of our foundational schools. Not all of them utilize STAR. So, I'm going to turn it over to Charlotte, who helped compile this report.
Yes, thank you, Tom. So, first here, we're seeing a chart that shows how all of the students who took the fall STAR reading or the fall STAR math, so all grade levels, how they scored on their assessment. So, the green is where we have meeting or exceeding expectations. Blue is approaching expectations. Yellow is partially met and red is did not meet. So, as you can see from the data shown on the screen, 61% of D-128 students met or exceeded the expectations on the STAR reading and 62% of D-128 students met or exceeded the expectations on STAR math. Again, as Tom mentioned, some of our students in very high levels aren't taking this. So, those students aren't represented here, who would have certainly exceeded expectations based on their level, but having gone above what STAR really tests them for. Next. And this looks almost exactly the same. This is the exact same graph, but here we are looking only at our ninth graders. So, a group of students who were really tracking closely and monitoring and their data is extremely similar, very much in line with what we saw across all grades.
And just as a clarification point, when we look at STAR benchmarks like this, these are linked to our common core state standards. So, we get a general picture. It's not a state assessment, but STAR has, gives us data that tells us if our students were to take a state assessment, this is likely the percentage that would meet and exceed, the percentage that would not yet meet, or the percentage that would be in need of intervention.
Tom, what are we comparing this against? I mean, in isolation, what am I looking at? Then I see 61% or 64%. Is that benchmark showing me success? Is that benchmark showing me that, you know, things are going right? What is it exactly telling me?
This is telling us right here where our students are starting with us. These are our ninth graders taken during the first three weeks of school. So, this tells us which of our students are at a grade level proficiency, which are approaching that, which might be below. And what we can do with our staff is we drill into those numbers and we're able to see the students in yellow and red. Are those students, what classes are those students? What have they selected? Are those students connected to our interventions? So, it gives us a picture of how our students are starting with us. It allows us to also say, for our curriculum, where we can get very detailed information about which of the state standards our students are demonstrating success with and which are they still yet to master. And we can take a look at that on a grade level, like ninth grade. We can look at it at a course level and say, do we have the right curriculum to match to our student needs? Or do we need to make adjustments to meet some of the needs that are showing up on this assessment?
So, essentially, if I think of it very simplistically, this is informing your plan of how do you deal with the curriculum? How do you deal with the students from intervention perspective or planning for the rest of the year? And will we have another point in time where we compare that against like, hey, did our interventions work?
Yes, yes. We can do a lot of, we can do program evaluation with this and the students who participated in this intervention, how did that work for them? We can also see how our students are responding to our curriculum and our instruction by their growth rates, which we'll talk about in a second as well.
Is this also the first year that we're doing STAR universally? Is that why we don't have comparisons to last year? Is this the first year that every nine through, nine and 10, first of all, is getting it? Or if they test it out for 11 and 12?
Yeah, this is one of the, last year, we started to expand it, but this year was the first year we were really intentional about all.
So, to, I mean, even though I started the conversation saying, we want to make sure we understand that STAR test is used to identify interventions, there is some kind of growth that we could also see as for, as... that we could also see is for, as how are our students prepared in the fall, as compared to how were they prepared last year? I know we don't have that data universally this year, but next year, as a part of this presentation, when we go through it, although it doesn't show performance, I'm sure our community wants to see where were our students ready this year versus next year? And we should see at least those same levels, if not some kind of improvement with the kind of MTSS that we have this year.
Yes, and STAR may not be the test that we use to show that growth. STAR does, does provide us longitudinal growth, but STAR is a test that we are still assessing its value in terms of, especially the upper grades with students who are at the high end of the proficiency. We may find instruments that are more attuned to students that we kind of see better levels of growth with, and that may be what we use to kind of monitor growth. Where STAR is one tool that we, that we are utilizing, it may not be the one that we choose to say, this is, you know, it, a lot of times, we're going to triangulate. Like, what's good about our data is that the STAR data that we're seeing tonight is reflective of some of the same data we're going to see in our PSAT, in terms of levels of proficiency with students. And so different exams have different purposes. Some are achievement exams to show kind of the outcomes, others are more along the lines of student growth exams to show progress over time. So what we want to do is make sure we're using the, the best assessment to give the best information about the questions that we're asking.
Right, so if we're going to use STAR, if STAR is in, regardless, if you're going to make a different recommendation to the board and say, this is not the tool that we want to use to identify performance in order to identify intervention, at some point, we should be able to show some kind of growth. There, there
Absolutely.
Regardless of whether growth within that year, but also growth with, systemically, right? If we're going to give it to 1,000 students, I know they're not the same 1,000 students, but the hypothesis is, these are the students and this is how they're prepared, right? That's what the STAR is showing us, whether they're prepared or not, or where they are, if they meet, partially meet, approaching. So we should be able to show some kind of historical data that, I mean, I know that's what the teachers are
Well, and STAR
That's how we report it to our, to our community. And I know there's other measures that we're going to talk about as far as achievement, which is the PSAT and the SAT, but if we're going to report this, let's report why we're using this data and show some kind of historical comparison.
Yes, I think we are. I think this STAR, the reason I like STAR is because we get very good views of how our students are growing. And STAR is a national test that is given to hundreds of thousands of students across the country. It's in all 50 states. And what STAR does is it says, here is your student, they started the year to 200, here's where they grow, so they grew to a 220, right? And to your question of, well, what does that mean? STAR gives us a standardized growth percentile that says, this student's growth was in the 65th percentile nationwide, or this student grew at the 80th percentile nationwide. So what that tells us is that if all the students in the country who tested at a 200 in the fall, our student grew greater than 65% of them, or greater than 80% of them. So we get very specific growth about an individual student, we get growth about our, our courses, and we get growth about a class as a whole through using STAR.
I mean, eventually, I think, Tom, all of us are just looking at, like, how do we measure program success? How do we measure what we are doing is working or not?
Right.
Same way as we measure the, the students, whether they need intervention or not, do we need intervention or not? So.
My two questions, actually, this one just came up based on what you said, but saying that a student grew, let's say X percentile in their growth is okay, is, is one thing, but do we have a goal set where we want all of our students to meet a certain minimum progress bar, and we call that success?
Yes, so with STAR, yes, you have what would be the 50th percentile, which would be your standard growth. So our goal would be to have all of our students be, what you're going to see is that STAR is going to give us a grid, and it's going to let us know achievement, how well did our students achieve, but it's also going to let us know growth. And where we want to be is in the upper right-hand quadrant, which is, we want to see high achievement and high growth from our students. That means our students are achieving really well, and that means that they're growing during the year. Because there are some schools where kids come in, they're already achieving at grade level, and they don't grow at all. They make one year's worth of growth in one year's worth of time, that's average growth. What we believe is that our school, with our resources, with our talented staff, with our students, we want to be able to see students not only continuing to achieve, but also continuing to grow. And we think this helps us make some of those assessments.
I have a second question, and that is, I'll be interested to see, of the students that were accelerated on their APA, how many of them fall in the green versus the not, let me just say not green?
Well, all
And how does, how will that inform, as you go through, you know, we'll be enrolling students again in about three months or so? How does that inform our decisions as to what we should do with the APA? Should we continue what we did before, or do we need to change course?
So the APA, let's remember, we're open enrollment, so we don't put students anywhere. What we do is, we, students take a test, and when they meet or exceed, so if they're in the green, then they are eligible, by, in the state's words, for automatic acceleration. Now, we don't hold anybody back, though. We don't say, you can't take a class if you're not in the green. So I, so last year, what we did as a district was, according to the language of the state, it was if you met or exceeded, you had to automatically be enrolled in the class, the next highest level of the class. So students were placed into, if they met or exceeded, they were placed into an honors or an AP course, and then they were given the option to withdraw from that class and take whatever class they wanted to take. Okay? So we can go into, at another meeting, we'll go into the changes for the APA for next year. We didn't plan to do that tonight, but those discussions are happening. We still, by state law, students who are in the green have met or exceeded standards, they would be eligible for automatic acceleration. And as a school with open enrollment, we would be allowing students in the green to enroll in an honors class, but if you test in the yellow or red and you want to take an honors class, you would be able to. So we have to be careful about how we're asking because students have choice, and so when we're making those choices, what we want to do is, we want to look at, how did the students in this curriculum perform? And we can look at ranges of success, like students who got As, which level testing did they, which band did they kind of fall into? To kind of see in general, students who are successful in this course tend to fall into these specific levels of testing. But in terms of APA, we would be having open enrollment and students in all of these bands selecting classes at different levels.
Can I ask a question? So for the two slides, when we're looking at STAR data for both all grades and ninth grades, here's how I understand it, and tell me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to figure out what, what is the teeth that we're supposed to get from these two slides? And basically, it's important to remember, not every student is getting a STAR. So for those students that are either testing out or 11th and 12th, then they're not, so this isn't the whole student body, but we do use this as a universal screener. Can we generally say that around 60% of our student population meets or exceeds standards in the fall? Period. And from that, now we tease out who needs the intervention, but is that basically the purpose of these two slides? That the teachers are going to do what they, you know, the, the departments and the teaching, you know, groups are going to be deciding what it looks like moving forward, but what we are supposed to get from this is from those students that have taken the STAR, about 60%, a little bit over 60%, are meeting or exceeding expectations.
Correct.
And our goal should be 85% if we were to follow kind of like a, if we were to follow a pyramid of, you know, our, what we want, if that was our goal, hopefully, we would see 85%. But we have to remember, if we were to screen everybody, even including those students that did not take the STAR, that number might increase because they would also be meeting or exceeding. So it's important to remember for STAR, this is not universal, this is identifying interventions. So if we were to take all those students and put them back into this hole, our number could reflect closer to that 85%. Am I right, or that's how I'm reading it?
Yes, I think our goal is 100% of students meeting standards, but no school in Illinois has gotten there yet, and
Your first goal.
Right. And let's remember, we're high school, what's different than elementary? Elementary schools, you do have different standards that oftentimes are either state or locally normed standards, and you'll have higher percentages. In the state of Illinois, our benchmark is the SAT and the college and career readiness standards. Nationally, across the country, we're only seeing 30, across the state, I think, we're, we have this data in here, but we're only seeing about 30% of students statewide meeting those. So we're double that at 65. And yes, we want to always increase that performance, but one of the things we've seen since the pandemic is all high schools in our area have seen a drop in their state proficiencies. That goes to New Trier, that goes to Hinsdale, any school you want to compare Libertyville High School or Vernon Hills to, has a drop in their overall percentage. However, what we're seeing is, we're starting to see a gradual upcrease in our performance, and we need to do more, and we need to dig into this. And that's why we're presenting this data to you as a board, is to understand comparatively how our school is, how our district is doing well, and the areas where we do see some declines and some of the curricular initiatives we're taking to address those things.
I think the only other thing that, when you present these metrics, maybe next year same time, is to think about the timelines for all of these are, are different, right? You take your SAT towards the end of your 11th grade.
That's correct. Then you won't take the SAT next year, you'll take the ACT.
But there is, that standardized testing is taken towards the end, here, you're starting to take this through the school year, so I think it would be good for you to show a correlation, or at least show how those two stand next to each other.
Which two?
Like the ACT or SAT, whatever, and PSAT that they take? Because the, the grades are different. You're showing a PSAT eight, nine score, but that is for students when they were in eighth grade versus
No, and ninth grade.
And
So when we get there, I'll explain that. Let me show the STAR, so we'll go to one more. So here, this is what some of you are talking about. This is a, a measure that's important to us. So what we look at here is STAR reading and STAR math. Now, this are, these are the students in District 128 who took a fall STAR test last year and a fall STAR test this year. And what we see is that those in the dark are, have grown above the 65th percentile. So nationwide, they've grown more than 65% of the students that in their test, that had the same test score as them. The light teal is the 35th to 65th percentile, and the pink teal is the, below the 35th percentile. So what this does is it allows us to say, who are the students who are in the high growth areas, who are in the middle growth, and who are in those lower growth areas? And if we see students who are in similar courses or similar grade levels in the low growth area, that allows us to ask questions, is that curriculum best aligned to student needs? Are we getting the type of growth we would expect from this curriculum? Are there changes we need to make, whether it's the instructional materials we use, the curriculum that we're covering, the ways that we're presenting that information to try to get greater growth from our students? Okay? So this is one of the areas that STAR does help us, because it does allow us to look at the growth percentiles that we're getting. And again, at high school levels, what we see is that in Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School, we are designated by STAR as a high-growth, high-achievement district, meaning when they look at all the schools in the country taking these same tests, we are in the quadrant of schools that is not only getting high achievement from students, but also growing our students.
So we may find that in that low-growth bar in STAR reading, we have a particular class where our students are all getting As, they're doing really, really well, but they're not growing a lot.
Right.
And that informs the teacher teams then, that they could probably stretch that course.
Yes. And you, you actually oftentimes see that in your honors courses, because the kids come in doing really well, and they maintain good grades, but when it comes to their actual growth, they may not grow all that much. That's why we're evaluating STAR, to see if it captures growth at the high end of the spectrum versus the way it captures growth at the lower end of the performance spectrum.
I think, if I had one comment, in my mind, I see this very different. I mean, this doesn't mean that the, the people in the, in the pink are performing poorly.
Right.
The, the one thing that this, in my mind, represents is, this represents a student from year to year
Right.
Being assessed on the same things each year to determine whether they're growing, growing above the, the norm, growing above what they need in order to achieve at the level that they would be expected to achieve, and that achievement measured by something else, like an SAT or a P, or an ACT or whatever. So this is really looking, giving us tools to look at very detailed data on a student, on a individual student over time versus when we see our SAT data, PSAT data, that's different set of students each year. It just happens to be all our ninth graders this year, and then we measure all our ninth graders the next year, and it's, they're different students are different. They're measuring the same thing, but it, it's not really helpful for us to be able to create the interventions and, and look at our, our curriculum more specifically, to be able to see what, how we're, how those students are growing, which is really the goal. If everyone's at an A, and then we're stuck and we're not growing, that doesn't do us any good. You know, that, that, that's not really beneficial. They're not learning enough. If everyone's performing really poorly and they're growing very fast, that's good, but we still need them to continue to grow fast. So it's, it's apples and oranges in many ways. So to, to compare these numbers with the ACT or SAT, it's not really apples to apples.
That's a good point.
Kind of why I would say, I don't know in the future if we want to start with this. I don't, I mean, I know you are deciding how you want to, if we're even going to continue on with STAR, but this STAR test tests, the purpose of the STAR and the information from the STAR is so much different from an academic performance test.
Yes.
SAT, PSAT, that it just confuses to those that aren't living data. I mean, I, so
This test gets even more confusing because it's not the same for every student. The test changes as you take it.
And not every student is taking it. So it, it leads us, it leads somebody who doesn't understand what the purpose of this to assume, that only 60% of our students are at meeting or exceeding benchmarks, and we know that's not the case, it's probably more. And we'll see with the PSAT, that maybe we don't want to start with this, with the STAR or whatever our screener is in the future, and if we're talking about performance, and that's the title of our presentation is academic performance, then let's start with, not that this information isn't important, it is, and I know how the teachers and the teaching teams are using this to identify, but if we're going to talk about performance, let's talk about that information that truly gives us what their perform, their performance is, academic performance is now, not as, as opposed to intervention identification and growth. I mean, I know, I know there's value, I just think it muddies the water to people who don't understand what the STAR is.
Okay.
That would be my only suggestion in the future.
All right. Let's move to the next ones then on the PSAT. So the PSAT eight, nine, and PSAT 10 are both preliminary SATs. This is the last year you'll hear us talk about these because they are going away. And one of the things that's very challenging for those of us in high schools is that we try to build data sets to allow the predictability that you're asking for. However, because the state changes their contract from a financial consideration, we have all this data now that we've been building on PSAT that is now going away because they have changed to the ACT as the contract. So we are now, starting this year, giving the pre-ACT, the pre-ACT nine, the pre-ACT 10, and we will be giving the ACT. and we will be giving the ACT. So it'll be difficult for us to show long-term achievement and trends in our district for a while because we have to rebuild all of those data sets. But it is what it is. So these tests help prepare our students for future standardized testing. So they are predictive of the SAT, and they can help students identify their strengths and areas of improvement for focus. Each test is a snapshot in a moment in time, like Dr. Batson was talking about. And therefore, they cannot really be used exclusively to make determinations about a student's progress, but it is certainly part of painting the whole picture of our students. So let's go into the data that we have for the PSAT 8, 9, which was the test that our sophomore students took during the spring of their freshman year.
Yes. So for the past several years, our 9th graders have taken this in the spring. So we are showing on this slide three years of data. The benchmarks change for each test. So you're seeing there in that little gray box on the right side what the benchmarks are for this test. So EBRW is evidence-based reading and writing. So you can consider that the English language arts portion of the test. And then math is math, of course. So the EBRW benchmark is 410, and the math benchmark is 450 for the PSAT 8, 9 for 9th graders. That's actually a different benchmark if we give the PSAT 8, 9 to 8th graders. Here, we're talking about 9th graders. So those are the 9th grade benchmarks. So this chart is showing three years' worth of our data. That's the yellow, the blue, and the purple. And you see the different sections, meeting benchmarks on EBRW, meeting benchmarks on math, meeting both benchmarks, meeting neither benchmark. The gray bar that you see there gives us a little bit of context. That is the statewide 2024 percentage of students meeting benchmarks, percentage of 9th graders meeting these benchmarks. So where we do see a small amount of fluctuation in some of our meeting of benchmarks here, we also see that we are, in some cases, nearly doubling the state proficiency. So that is something that we can definitely be proud of. We do have some places where we've gone up and down a little bit here. We're a little bit down this year. This is from last year. In some of these areas, more steady in EBRW than in math. So we do have some fluctuations there that we need to continue focusing on and paying attention to because obviously, we want those bars growing year after year.
But just to clarify, this is not comparing the 22, 23, and 24 same group of students. It's a different group of students each year.
Yes, correct. Yeah, we will show some cohort data later in the presentation for the classes that we have that for. But right now, we're just comparing the PSAT 8, 9 that was taken each year for the past three years.
The other thing to note, it's good for our bars to be above the gray one, except for in the very last column.
Yes.
We want it to be way below that gray bar.
Yes.
So just, the first three above the gray bar is good. The last one below the gray bar is good.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. That's the percentage of students who met neither benchmark. So yes, we want those to be low and the rest to be high. Thank you.
When we had, I think the first one was right at the end of COVID. I think that was the first 9th grade class that was coming in post-COVID, and we had some, I don't think we had adequate attendance. And I'm going a bit by memory here. But I'd like to understand kind of what are the thoughts of, even if it's come down a little bit, to me, that is worrisome because we should be looking at going up. So coming down, even if it's by a few percentage points, to me, is worrisome. So has there been any thought given on what's contributing to that number?
In terms of the PSAT 8, 9, well, we've seen, like, our literacy rate is, like, this is different classes of kids. So what we see are different groups of students performing in different ways. And we have to look at, we look at our trend line to see if we're, if we're starting to have a consistent downward, then usually what we would say is, what are the curricular things that we're doing to prepare our students for success on this exam? The best way to have students perform well on this exam is to have a really strong curriculum that is tied to the state standards, in this case, the Common Core, that is helping our students master the clear objectives. Then what we do is we look at, how well do our teachers know that test? And are we doing things during the course of the school day to help our students prepare for these exams? Things like helping to align some of our assessments to the types of questions that the students might see on a PSAT. So we're going to kind of discuss that in general, but that's a general answer to that question.
Yeah, I mean, I've had kids go through this, and you could have a bad day on the day of the test and not do well. And that's not a reflection on your knowledge, or you could just be a bad test taker. I mean, I understand that. But do we, I know we've made some curricular changes at the 9th grade level this year. So do you have a goal in mind as to what we want? Like, if you were to add a box number four that reflects the next PSAT, that would be next ACT?
Yeah. So we don't set a specific target of, we want to see 5% growth. That was an era, we tried that in public education, and it was not successful because kids are multivariate. And you are not comparing one student. You're comparing different cohorts and large groups of students. And so what we see is, we see different populations changing in our district. We see the importance of this test. Like, there could be many reasons for this information. What's in our control is our curriculum. And so for us in general, if we see that our results are not where we want them to be, we're going to dig into our curriculum. But what you got to remember on this test is some of our students after COVID may not ever have any interest in taking an SAT. A lot of schools are going test optional, for example. So investment in the test might be low, right? This is a one-day test that does not tie to grades, and it's not tied to college. So one of the things that we have to also consider is what are our students focused on these exams? And that's why we're constantly looking at multiple measures to see, are our students going down on all measures? Or is it just this one? And how do our students compare to students statewide and nationwide on these exams? Are we seeing similar trends? So that work is being done. Out of everything that we're doing, though, the short answer would be, we are, when we look at our ACE, that now we're moving to ACT. So what we have to do is we have to make sure that all of our teachers understand and really understand the new ACT. What's it look like? How is it assessing students? We know the standards that it offers. Those are the Common Core standards. Our curriculum is aligned to those things. Once our teachers are familiar with the ACT, how are they introducing preparation for that test into their class? Are there homework questions they're giving that are aligned to some ACT preparation? Are there test questions they're giving on their assessments that are aligned to the ACT? Then what we have to look at is, what are the external test preparation resources that are available to students? Many of our middle-income students and upper-income students, they will seek private test preparation. As our district's amount of low-income students increases, we may want to look at what test preparation resources we're offering to all students, not just low-income, but to all students so that students of all income levels can get test prep experience here in the high school. That's something that we could consider in the future if we become very concerned about our test scores.
Mike, this seems like a natural time to ask the question. Can you educate me? How long are these contracts with the state of Philadelphia? How long are they?
I believe this one with ACT is six years, if I'm not mistaken.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And it's a challenge this year because the state awarded the contract in the summer. And the state, ACT had not yet developed the pre-ACT 8 and the pre-ACT 9 and 10. So we're truly flying blind a little bit this year. We know what the ACT is, but the ACT is now going to a digital format, and that is different than a paper and pen format. So we have to adjust to that as well.
Are they offering you, you and our high schools, any guidance on how to kind of analyze our historical data so that it can be somewhat translated into an ACT form?
There's concordance tables that you can look at for SAT to ACT. So that, we have those skills. We know how to do that. And the state is, ACT as a company is offering some guidance. And Charlotte and I have been participating in webinars and things like that. But it's really concordance tables is all you have.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the other question, I mean, I just thought of it as you were talking. I know that from our Panorama survey or our Five Essentials surveys, I mean, it kind of always sticks in my mind that we have over 90% of our student body that says their goal is to go to a four-year university. And I know even universities are now shifting. We're moving away from the test optional or the test. So when we talk about how are we educating on the importance of these, it's going to become more and more important based on what they are telling us their goals are. So that has to become a part of the conversation, right?
Yes. And our, like, our college resource centers, our counseling resource centers, we're having those conversations with students. So absolutely, we want to provide students the skills they need to be successful on a standardized test because we do believe it's important for many of our students to have this skill for their post-secondary options. Now, more and more colleges have gone away from, they've become test optional. Schools, some colleges are starting to go back to having standardized tests. Others are remaining with test optional. So the landscape is very unclear. But in general, we as a school system want to prepare all of our students to have success on their ACT, both for an indication that our curriculum is supporting their growth towards state standards and so that unlocks doors for them in post-secondary pursuits.
I think it's also really important to remember that these standardized tests, the ACT or the SAT, are built off of college readiness standards. So, you know, kind of regardless whether schools are requiring them or not, the test indicates how prepared kids are for college-level rigor. And so there is usefulness in these tests, but I hear what you're saying, right? It's kind of a nebulous playing field right now, right? What are colleges doing in the future? What contracts are, you know, will the state agree to in the future? How are we going to field all of those questions coming forward? But I think the fact remains that the good news is, is these tests are built around readiness standards. And so preparing our students who report 90% want to go on to college, you know, preparing them for these tests is still, for now, good practice. Okay.
Next slide, Dan.
All right. So whenever we look at our standardized testing data, really important that we do some demographic disaggregation. So this slide in particular, there's going to be one that mirrors it. This is for the EBRW or the reading and writing portion of the PSAT 8, 9. The blue line that's going across the top is at 88%. That represents how many? That represents our entire student population. And what, so that's what you saw on the last slide for the 2024 result, 88% of students meeting benchmarks. So then with each of the green bars, we can very easily see which of our student groups are at that level or above it and which ones are missing the mark. And as we give this presentation year after year, we continue to see those student groups where we need to continue to have some focus and ensure that they are being supported. English learners are taking this test in a language that is not their first language and possibly not a language they're even really speaking yet. So that's a huge challenge. It's a huge ask from our English learner population, but they do have to take the test in English. So we certainly see some gaps here. But so this is something we focus on so that we are aware of where those gaps are and who we need to continue to offer support.
Yeah, and this is why our equity and inclusion work is focused on academics and it's beyond race. We do look at our students with IEPs. And what's important about that is, this is not the students who have, what this measure shows is just the 10% of our students to 11% who have an actual IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, not the students who would also have a 504 as well. And then also our low-income students. And we have to also be careful with these numbers because some of these cohorts of kids are extremely small. So you might have only 40 students in a subgroup here, and we could see larger fluctuations in achievement from year to year because the population of students is so small, where when you have a small sample size, you're more subject to kind of being skewed by outliers in performance. So, but we do monitor this very closely, and we do watch this. And so now, this would be some of the areas of goal-setting where we would want to see more of our subgroups all reaching that benchmark standard.
I would say, you know, we're not going to see this again until next October. We saw this last October, and I'm assuming we're going to see this next October. And I know we're going to be moving from ACT. But if we have this information, I think for myself and for the community, I want to see comparisons historically over time. And all of these are, you know, we also disaggregated this last year. So we can see, with the kind of intervention and support that we have been identifying with, or we have been supplying for certain subgroups, we should be seeing that number reaching the meeting expectation. And it's not compared to last year. So I think we want to include historical data. And I know we're moving into a completely different testing reporting. But meeting expectations is meeting expectations. And I think for myself and the community, we should be able to see some historical data to see, you know, the whole point is that we're supposed to be able to show what we're doing here and the changes that we're making is making an improvement. And we have that information.
I would agree with that. And the only other thing which is throwing me is the first three bars have nothing to do with race, and the other bars are based on race. So then the question comes to me, how many white students are represented in English learners or students receiving special services? So it's hard for me to compare the first three bars with the last five bars.
And you shouldn't be. That's not the purpose of this. What you should be comparing is each green bar to the blue line. That's really, that's really what we're looking at here. This group of, yes, there are students who are going to fall into multiple bars. That's very possible. A student could fall into theoretically four of those different bars. So that student is counted in each of those bars. So we're not necessarily needing to compare the groups to each other, but more, what is the overall thing that's happening, which is 88% of students meeting benchmarks? And how does each group compare to that? Which groups aren't hitting that mark? And in addition, how is that changing over time? Which we didn't show here, but we certainly can.
I think that would be the most beneficial thing to show, to show it over a period of time because that's what shows success of what we are doing, right? Or what we need to find.
Yeah, though, Minda Lesh. I know, these are different students. These are different 9th graders. But still, it informs us what's going on in our 9th grade, right? Or 8th grade. But, and I also want to say, I know that small numbers... But, and I also want to say, I also, I know that small numbers of students make big differences in these percentages. So you have to give us what those, that number is, right? 47% of, yeah, less than 100 students is different than 47% of over 800 students. So you've got to let us know, how many students are we talking about in each of these subgroups? And I, I think it's, you know, since we have the historical data, I understand, I mean, when we're looking at this as a snapshot, it would be more helpful if we can look at it as more of a continuum.
And for me, at least for me, and it's been a long day for me, but I'm not able to resolve the fact that you might have double, triple, quadruple counting of students across this. So maybe I just have to look at this when I haven't had a 12-hour day, but.
If I may, I, I think the, the point of this was to try to summarize the subgroups that are really focused on at D-128. And so in order to optimize the presentation and not have like a slide on each of them, I think it was the best attempt to try to give you one slide that tried to give as much information as possible. That's why they're listed.
And this is also not just subgroups for D-128, this is subgroups for the state of Illinois. So we, if we don't demonstrate strong performance in all of these subgroups, that would affect our overall rating as a school.
No, I think it's okay to show performance in each of these subgroups, but you've got to then help us see how many double, multiple counts there are across, maybe? Again, I'll, I'll ask when I'm not, when I'm less tired, but that's just throwing me, you could have.
There's thousands of ways we can package the, the data. So we want to make it so that the board and the community understand it. And it sounds like you have, it sounds like you have questions and we'll continue to refine that and for you to be able to see the data you want to see.
Tom or Charlotte, do you have just like a loose figure on, for instance, fee waiver percentage of students in the district or fee waiver percentage of students in this particular cohort? Even if it were like a ballpark?
We can, we can look it up real fast.
The actual number?
I mean, I think just to illustrate kind of one particular group, it would be helpful to see what we're kind of looking at.
Showing just the count instead of percent might, might just make it easier.
Make it both, right? Like, so we understand what we are looking at and what insights are we supposed to get from it?
Yes.
So just for instance, district-wide, low-income students are 10% of our population. So we're talking 300 and change for low income. Now, that is district-wide, so.
And for that, and for that year, and for last year.
Yes.
It changed, it's not the same every year.
Yes, correct. Last year and district-wide, all grades. So we're looking at one grade. So if it's split evenly, which likely it's not, but if it were, we're talking about 75-ish kids for low income.
And certainly building to building, that may look different.
Yes, absolutely, it does, absolutely, yes.
And that's what I was talking about is the timeline of like, you're showing PSAT scores, but this was for last year's class, these kids are now sophomores.
Correct, yes.
So it, it's kind of, and it, it's just the nature of when these things occur. There's nothing you can do about it, but.
But Sanali, I think that's why I, if we're looking at this in the future, I understand they're different kids, but we should start to see a trend of at least stability or growth, right? And we have it, we have that information. I know you, you know, you're able to show us just even three slides ago, how it looks, you know, going historically. And I think we need to share that so that we can start evaluating what is, you know, are, are we meeting our goals?
Absolutely, yes. Okay, let's move on to the next, this is the exact same thing but for math. So the exact same information, we're still looking at ninth graders, we're looking at their math. The blue bar is at 66%. That's the number overall of ninth graders at D-128 who last year met benchmarks on their PSAT eight-nine in math. And the green bars are showing where our different student groups are relative to that. So it's, it's the same groups, the, the bars have changed heights in certain cases, but it's the sa, it's the same groups who continue to need our focus.
We can go to the next one?
Yes, so this is, okay, we're going to see that series again for PSAT 10. So this is last year's 10th graders. So we're going to see the same things, the, the trends are similar, the benchmarks have changed. So here, the EBRW or reading and writing portion benchmark has now moved up to 430. The math benchmark has moved up to 480. So again, the, the yellow is 2022, blue is 2023, purple is 2024, and the gray is the state in 2024. We just took one year for the state just to give a context. So on our PSAT 10, and again, different groups of students. This is what happened on the PSAT 10 each year with different groups of students. We've got a slight increase in our EBRW score this year, little decrease in math, little decrease in meeting both, but also a decrease in meeting neither, which is where we want to decrease. That's a good thing. So, so same data for our PSAT 10.
And again, it's worth noting that the 2024 data, we're doing twice as well as the rest of the state.
Yes, yes. And on the next slides, same thing, okay? Same thing and same, same groups that, that we continue to point out. So again, the, the, the blue line, this is for reading and writing for PSAT 10. The blue line is set at 87%, which is D-128 overall percentage of students who met benchmarks and where, and then each student group, the percentage of that group that met benchmarks and how that compares. So again, we see, we see some fluctuation in the heights of the bars, but we continue to see the same groups. So this tells us something, this helps us to know where our focus is, as it has been. These trends, we don't have the data right in front of us, but these, these are the same groups. These trends are similar year to year. So this is, this is where we need to have a very large focus. And as Tom said, to continue our, our efforts in equity.
Is it a fair statement to say that the PSAT eight-nine and PSAT 10 are very similar tests? But what happens is the benchmark actually increases when you're in 10th grade versus when you take it in ninth grade.
Correct.
So the bar is raised, getting assessed on many of the same things.
Correct.
But the bar is raised higher.
Right.
It's a more difficult bar.
We're going to see that play out dramatically when we look at, when we start adding SAT data in as well because the benchmark goes through the roof.
And as I'm toggling between last year's presentation and this year, so it's important to note that we went from 82% to 87% in 10. So we are, you know, there are some, I think we have to take the wins when we can.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, next. Again, same thing, same thing for math on PSAT 10. 61% was our overall of meeting benchmarks. And again, we continue to see those same groups. So I'm showing that for math. Next, okay, so now we're going to look at cohorts. And there are, there are some nuances here. First of all, we're bringing, this is the class of 2025. This is the current seniors. So they have taken three years of standardized testing. This is their percentage of meeting benchmarks on each of those tests. So this is following the same group of students. We've brought in SAT here. We are not digging into SAT in a deep way tonight because that is going to be part of our report card presentation that we will give next week. But we added SAT here because this cohort has three years of data and we want to show that. So a few things that, that we need for context here. On the, the PSAT eight-nine and the PSAT 10, as we've seen, the benchmark changes slightly from year to year. And those benchmarks are based on college boards' college and career readiness benchmarks or college readiness benchmarks. When we move to SAT, the benchmarks are set by the state of Illinois and they are higher than college boards' benchmarks. So where, so for the reading and writing portion of the SAT, the Illinois benchmark is 60 points higher than the college board benchmark. This is not as pronounced in math, but it is, the Illinois benchmark is higher than college boards. So we expect to see a, a decline in meeting benchmarks when the benchmark has been set at such a high jump. So we are seeing that very clearly for the EBRW. And a, a, a large part, not the whole thing, but a large part of why that number is going down so drastically is that the benchmark has increased in a very, in, in a large way.
Can I ask then, why present the data like this?
Because that is what Illinois requires us to do. This, so we could, I could present the college board benchmark, but that would not be reflective of what we're seeing on our report card. Because that, the, the Illinois benchmark is what we are basing all of this on. So if we had used the college board benchmarks for EBRW, I believe we were at 79%. So we're still seeing a, a bit of a decrease in our, in our cohort regardless of, of that benchmark moving. So that's, that's one thing and that's something we need to pay attention to and ask ourselves some questions about. But the reason for the very large decline and especially in, in the, the reading and writing is the benchmark has increased drastically and it is high, high above what college board says that benchmark should be.
Can you give some background on why that was, why it's so elevated in Illinois?
I don't.
The short answer is each state sets its own proficiency. And the state of Illinois said it's at a very high level compared to other states nationally. There's a committee at the state level looking to restructure the state benchmarks. I don't know why they set it where they did set it, but that's where it is. So comparatively to states around us, Illinois' data looks poor because our stats, our benchmarks are so high. So now the state is considering what should an accurate or a reasonable benchmark be for our students?
That benchmark stayed stable in Illinois or do they change it every year?
No, it's the, it's stable, yes.
Yeah. So this is, so this is an example where we're, we're absolutely trying to be transparent with our data. We could show the, the college board benchmarks and we could show the STAR benchmarks and we would see 90% proficiency on STAR and we would see almost 80% proficiency on SAT. But that is not the benchmark that we as a school district are held accountable to. So this does show a drop. And one of the reasons why we are doing all of the curricular changes at the ninth grade level was because we believe that not all of our students were in classes that were as rigorous as they needed to be. And that was why the restructuring at ninth grade biology, ninth grade math and ninth grade English was started last year. It was to address this trend. But it's going to take us time to see those curricular changes play out in the data. And it's not that we're done after doing those three changes at our freshman level. We are now starting to assess, okay, we've addressed our freshmen. Where's the next levels of our curriculum where we need to address to reverse some of the downward trends in the data that we're seeing?
But if we were going to compare class of 2024 and their SAT from last?
We, we will do that next week at the board meeting.
Okay.
You will be, you will see, we can go all the way back, we can go all the way back to 2017 and you'll see every SAT score and the percentage of students who have met exceeded and have not made progress.
When we look at this cohort, is it pretty consistent historically with where we've been relating it to Illinois benchmarks? The 62%.
Our, I don't know about compared to the benchmark, I need to check that. Our 62% has been similar, like pre-COVID, we were in the high 60s. Post-COVID, we're in the lower 60s. And so we've been consistent in this low to mid 60s for the last couple of years.
Yeah.
That, my question was the same is being able to see how class of 2024, 23, et cetera, did. But I believe this was also the year when we had the, the electronic SAT was the first time. So I know that was.
Yes.
That was.
That is true, yes.
That was new for many kids, though.
Yes.
Although most kids, they, they prefer taking their tests that way. Whether they do as well, I don't know, but they, they don't like bubbling anymore. So there, yeah, there's a lot to dig into here with cohorts. And we started tracking cohorts last year. Last year, we looked at class of 2025. And this is the first cohort we've really been able to look at because we have a year of missing data during COVID. So this is really where now we start to have year after year data. So last year, we saw this data, we just didn't have the SAT yet. We had the first two and this was the only year. So we'll look at class of 2026 next. But I do want to point out as well, and again, we're not digging into the SAT this week. That is something we can get excited for in two weeks. But just to, just to give a, a little bit more context on the SAT itself as well, even though we're seeing that drop, we are far ahead of what the state is seeing. And, and the state is also seeing some declines in their, in their cohort data. But statewide, 31% of 11th graders met benchmarks on EBRW versus our 62% and 26% of 11th graders met benchmarks on math. So just to, to put some context there. So agree that there, there's more to look at here, more to keep track of. We have to continue following our cohorts now that we have consistent data. So, so that's something we're doing. So if we go to the next slide, we have class of 2026. So what do we see here? We see a similar thing happening. And this does not have anything to do with a super jumping benchmark because here we're just looking at PSAT eight-nine to PSAT 10. So we've got just a small decline in our EBRW, but we've got a large decline in our math and therefore a large decline in our meeting of both. And then we have a, an increase, which is where we don't want an increase in our, in our meets neither. So this is a classic, we only have these two tests for currently, but something that we are starting now, last year when we looked at this, we only saw this slide for the class of 2025. This was the only thing we had. So the question was at that time, well, is that a fluke? Is that this class? What's going on? And so now as we gather more data and we have more, more to look at, now we starting, we, we are starting to see this maybe as a trend. What is happening? Why are we seeing decreasing on, on two, on, on two years of, of tests? So now armed with more data, last year, we didn't have an answer to that question. We couldn't, we didn't have enough information. Now we have it, we need to ask ourselves some of those hard, deep questions. And Tom has already spoken to that to a degree.
And further digging into math to see specifically our freshman sophomore curriculum, the outcomes that we're getting there and why we would not be performing better as the end of sophomore year on the PSAT 10.
And just for myself too, as kind of a non educator lens, this was odd to me and it, what it's not saying is that the kids are performing worse on the test. It says the group of, the percentage of kids that go into the higher benchmark, not the, a smaller percentage of them are hitting that higher benchmark. So you might, so meaning if you had EBRW 90% on the PSAT eight-nine and you had 90% on PSAT 10, that meant those, all those kids made the growth to hit that higher benchmark. This is saying not quite as many kids met that higher benchmark in each one. So they're not doing worse, they're, they're doing better, just fewer are hitting, are keeping pace, I guess, with that increased benchmark.
And so even though we're changing tests, we, we will continue to track cohorts as, as best we can. As I believe Cara said earlier, meeting a benchmark is meeting a benchmark. But for several years coming, we will all, we will have to have the caveat that one, we change tests and two, we, we change benchmarks. Those two things are both happening at ISBE and independent of each other regardless of. Um, at ISB, an independent of each other, regardless of moving to the ACT, ISB was looking at resetting benchmarks. So, um, that will all go into effect for this, this current school year. When we look at this next year, we'll, we'll, we'll have some caveats when looking at the data, but we still want to look at it. We still want to see what percentage of our students are meeting their benchmarks.
No, and, and really sharing that education next year of how are we comparing the two is going to be a big part of that conversation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not a, and this is a separate discussion, but there's all kinds of, um, issues with measuring student success and one standardized test stuck in time. It's part of the game that we play, so we have to do that, but it's really a poor measure and for a lot of reasons. What is a good measure in my mind of a school's success is the next section that we're going to talk about, which are AP exams. These are courses taught by our teachers, and these are tests that are nationwide tests that our students are compared to every other high school student who takes this same exam. And so what we see here is, the other thing is, one of the ways that we increase, if we're concerned about our PSAT and our SAT test scores decreasing, the most effective way to address that is to increase the access to rigor for all of our students. And the more rigorous courses that we have that students can take will better prepare them for success on standardized tests, no matter which one they're taking. So what's important here is that these AP exams were taken in May. And you're going to see not only the number of students and the number of exams, but the number of students who are passing, and we're also going to compare that to nationwide rates. Um, so we, uh, we want to remind you that even if a student doesn't pass the AP exam, we like the fact that they're enrolled in an AP course because it's the course, not the exam, that makes the impact. And students who take at least one AP course are much more likely to attend a four-year university. And students who take an AP course are much more likely to persist at a four-year university than students who are not. And so since 90% of our students want to attend a four-year university, we want to make AP courses accessible to all of our students. So let's start with the enrollment.
Yeah, so, uh, we're looking at two different, um, eh, ways to think about enrollment on these charts. And we have four years of data showing here. Um, so the, the first chart on the left, uh, is the number of students enrolled in AP courses by year. So this would count each student only once, even if they are enrolled in multiple courses. Um, so as we see that number is going up, we're enrolling more students in AP courses. And then next to that, we are looking at the total AP course enrollment. So this is counting every AP course students are taking. So a student who is taking five AP courses is counted five times in these bars. This is why those, the numbers are, are so high. Um, so as you can see, we had, uh, some dips, um, after the 2020-21 school year. Uh, we had some, some decreases, and we've been subtly increasing and have now come to the point where we are above our 2020-21, uh, numbers. So, uh, we are enrolling, uh, more students than ever. We are, um, enrolling them in more courses, uh, than ever. And so we are opening those opportunities more and more, um, to, uh, to our students. And to give us also, uh, some more numbers to think about because one thing we know is our enrollment has been decreasing a bit. And yet we're still seeing these numbers grow. So that means our percentages of students enrolled are growing even more. Uh, so at the height of AP enrollment in 20, uh, 2020-21, um, that number, uh, 1,791 students enrolled represented 54% of D-128 students. Um, so now that, um, in the pink, uh, 23, 24, 1,806 students enrolled, just a little higher than that green bar, but that represents 56% of D-128 students. So enrollment decreasing, uh, but enrollment in AP increasing, so really opening up those opportunities.
When we go to our next one, we see the exams taken and passed. Um, so what we see is over 96% of our students took the associated AP exam last year. Um, and then on the second chart to the right, we see the percentage pass rate, um, there. And we had a pass rate of 87.5% across the district on all AP exams taken last school year. And just so we're clear, passing an AP exam is a three or higher on that exam. So as we see, um, the, uh, continuing increase of students, and the students are continuing to take AP exams, and we are seeing, uh, more students than ever passing those exams as well.
That's something to celebrate.
Absolutely. And that's a testament to our teachers and our students who are putting in the work to pass those. Those are, as you know, for those of you that have had students in those classes, extremely challenging courses. Go to our next one, Dan.
So, um, here we have a, a demographic, um, disaggregation once again. This is showing a little bit differently than we saw before, but we are looking at the same groups, the exact same groups across the bottom. And, um, we are looking here at percentages of students who passed or did not pass. So passing, green, um, did not pass in that kind of pink. Um, remember, the overall rate was 87.5. Um, so most of, of our groups here are very, very, um, in line with that. So we aren't seeing the same disparities that, that we saw with PSAT, uh, in this data. I do want to point out English learners because that looks drastic. Um, that bar represents a total of 12 exams. So, um, English learners took 12 AP exams, um, three of them passed, nine of them did not. Um, again, though, important for them to even be having the experience in AP courses. But that looks very drastic, but does not represent, um, a huge number of, of students. So I wanted to just make you aware of that.
And this is excellent data because this is the type of data we want to see in all of our measures when we're disaggregating our results. We want to see the elimination of disproportionalities. And here we see all of our subgroups performing fairly consistent and consistently well in our AP classes. And that's our goal, to see this type of performance assessments and percentages for all subgroups in everything that we measure. That's how we know that we're eliminating some of the disproportionalities that can be apparent in our system.
Okay, next. Um, so we are, uh, coming toward the end of the presentation, and we want to end with some just really major celebrations. Um, these are three AP courses in particular that, um, have either been seeing some pretty steady gains over the years or made a significant gain, um, this past year. Um, so AP Chemistry, AP US Government and Politics, and AP US History, um, huge, huge increases in their pass rates. Um, and that is congratulations to the students and congratulations to the teachers of those courses. Um, some of them kind of little by little getting up there, and some of them making some drastic moves. So just really want to celebrate where we're seeing, um, those types of things. And this chart represents two new AP courses that were offered, um, last year. And so here, rather than seeing, um, several years worth of data, what we're, what we're doing is comparing our data to the state and the global data. So just to give some context and some comparison, so the light pink, uh, bar is our pass rate for these two new classes. Um, so brand new classes, the first time we're teaching this, the first time our students are learning this, and they are passing those exams at incredibly high rates. Um, and when we compare to, um, the state and global, seeing that, that those are good, those are great pass rates, uh, statewide and globally, uh, but we're even exceeding that. So we're just really, really proud, especially for new classes, um, that have been offered for the first time. Really, really proud, um, to show that.
And then there's one more slide, Dan, past this that we want to share.
Yeah, let me just real quick, um.
We'll go back.
Because, oh, you want to go back?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, my apologies.
Just real fast, the last one. This is breaking news, this just, uh, came in today. So, uh, District 128, the College Board gives, um, they call it the College Board Honor Roll for Schools. And, um, they create thresholds that they measure our system against all other districts, um, that provide AP exams. We finished, uh, with Gold Status, which is the second highest, but we are two of three Platinum indicators, uh, in this status. So Platinum is the highest, and we were only one indicator away from that. Uh, what this says is college culture, what is the percentage of students at your school who take at least one AP exam? So this year, 69% at LHS, or this is last year, right, 23, 24? 69% at LHS, 74% at VHHS. Um, the national standard is 65 for Gold. Um, and college credit is how many of your student exams are a three or higher? Um, and so 61, or how many of your students earned a three or higher? Not exams, but individual students. 61% at LHS, 65% at Vernon Hills. That puts us in Platinum status nationwide. And then college optimization is how many students are taking five or more AP classes? The College Board cuts it off at five because the research that they've done says more, a student taking more than five classes doesn't have any statistical impact on their level of success. So we have 30% at LHS and 45% of our students taking five or more over the course of their high school career. And the college optimization there is only 15% for Platinum. So we're doing extraordinarily well on our AP nationwide. And, um, our goal is to continue that, uh, expansion of college AP, uh, classes for kids. Hopefully, one day, we'll soon reach that 80% of students taking at least one AP exam, uh, over the course of their four years.
I think it's important to point out five over their high school career, not five simultaneous.
Correct.
Since freshman year. That would be a rough schedule.
Yes, it's five over a career. Uh, Dan, you want to go back to our final slide?
Let's go back one more. So, yeah, so, um, just there, there is so much AP data that we would be here all night and into, um, tomorrow night if we talked about all of it at once. So, um, what is here, um, is a document that, that shows the AP data for every course. So our students took 32 AP courses, um, last year. We cannot go into them all. So on that, um, document, you'll see four years worth of data for each course as well as a state comparison and a global comparison. So if you want to dig into each course and how each course looks, um, that is, that is in that document there.
I have a quick question. Um, AP is not the only way our students can obtain college credit before they graduate from us. And I know we're much earlier in this journey, but is there a point in time when we'll be able to see some of the same kind of data from dual credit, dual enrollment?
Yes, yeah, so we've, uh, um, moved our dual credit from having two courses. Last year, I believe we're at eight this year. And we're continuing to expand dual credit options, and we can certainly show at the end of this year how many students earned dual credit in which specific classes, um, that they took. So we are absolutely, uh, committed to providing those opportunities for our students. Not, every student may benefit from an AP class, um, but we want all students taking advantage of post-secondary options. Um, and dual credit is something that we're working very hard to expand to make that, uh, available to kids.
And some of that dual credit, dual enrollment types of classes are also more career oriented. And so that's, I know, important for some individuals as well.
Which we'll see in the curriculum proposals.
That's, that's what our curriculum proposal center heavily on this year.
So just so I understand, what you said was after the end of this year, we'll be able to start looking at data. So just to set the expectation of when that might be presented, summer?
Uh, yeah, like if you wanted this, like, we know how many kids are enrolled in a dual credit course right now, but they don't earn the dual credit until the end of the school year. They have to successfully complete the course and the end of course exam.
Sure.
So during the summer, um, this is my first year in the position, so I don't know when the dual credit data comes in. Um, it may be, I could report it as soon as they successfully pass the exam because they're not being compared to students nationwide. So I will have to determine when I can best present that to you. Um, I'm not exactly sure. I know how many kids are involved, enrolled in dual credit in which classes, but it will be towards the end of the school year, early summer, when I would most likely be able to present how many actually earned credit.
Sure. And we'll leave it to you to determine, does it make sense to present that on its own? Or does it make sense to figure out how we put all the data we're looking to into context? That'll be an interesting sort of, how do we present the data so that it's most useful and being compared side by side with things that it should be compared to?
Absolutely. Clearly, we, we're going to continue to work on that.
Uh, Tom and Charlotte, I just want to thank you for letting us have more of a conversation. I know this is very meaty, and as I was thinking, like, no, I'll wait till the end for a conversation or for questions. But I think, you know, we have to have those, those questions and that discussion. I mean, I appreciate us being able to have this more as a discussion and a conversation than a presentation and then questions, um, because it helped flow. So I hope you, uh, my questions were more so that we could talk about it as it was fresh in our mind.
Well, that's one of the benefits of discussing it at committee, where we can really take our time and dig into the data.
Absolutely, and that's what Charlotte and I are committed to working to build a really robust data system for us as a district. That's an area where we've recognized we could do better as a system. And so Charlotte and her team have done excellent work in starting to lay some of that groundwork. And that's an area of focus for us to continue to build out. Um, so that, um, we have very good, clear data sources that we can point everyone to that shows progress that we're making over time, or the areas of, that we're not making as much progress that have to be the focus of our goals and areas of school improvement.
And I think when you're living these things, sometimes it makes sense to you because you're living it. And then when you take it out to, you know, somebody who doesn't understand what this is, then that was the purpose of my conversation is that, you know, most of our parents are not living this, and we have to make sure that we're making sense of this.
Yeah.
Not just parents, but our community.
Right.
Uh, and if I'm having that question, I know others are having that question, and I know we want to be as clear as possible. So that was my intention of my question.
She took my thunder. I was going to say the same thing as a non-academic. I think it'll be helpful to explain upfront what these different mechanisms are and what exactly are they measuring, because they're not all the same.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
And thank you for the context.
Thank you for your patience, raw question.
Thank you for the context, because there were a couple of those slides where, as I was reviewing the packet, I was like, oof. It's a heady downward trend. We're going to be very concerned about that. There's still concern, but at least I have context now because that, well, thank you for that.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Uh, if there aren't any other questions, let's move on to the next item. Uh, this is the school calendar review.
Um, one of the questions, um, around the school calendar, so just a quick process review. You, um, every year as a board, you look at two calendars. Uh, one calendar you've already approved, that is the 25-26 calendar. Uh, the calendar committee meets in the fall. It is composed of teachers and, uh, staff from the schools, uh, administration, a parent, uh, representatives from the school, and our student board reps. Uh, we look at the 25-26 calendar to see if there's anything new that has come up that we would suggest being changed for next year. Uh, upon review of the 25-26 calendar, this year, we did look at the, uh, Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah. That, uh, holiday had not occurred at our first committee meeting, but we met again as a second committee, and we did have data. Um, so for staff, on that day, we had 24 staff members, uh, request a religious holiday, which was approximately 4% of our staff. Um, and on Friday, October 4th, that was Thursday, October 3rd, on Friday, October 4th, we had, uh, four staff members request a religious holiday. Uh, when we look at our students, um, on Thursday, October 3rd, we had 145 students absent at Vernon Hills, which was approximately 10%. And 52 students absent at Libertyville High School, which is right around 3%. So about 197 students absent on Thursday, October 3rd. And then we had 71 students absent on Friday, October 4th, 29 at Vernon Hills, and 42 at Libertyville. So when we look at the thresholds, um, for the operational calendar, we did not meet those thresholds for staff. thresholds for staff or for students. We were able to fill, there were other staff absences on that day that were for personal days or vacations or sick, but we filled all hundred percent of our sub-requests on that day. And on the following day, the Friday as well. So we, I don't have the specific numbers for Diwali. That just occurred on Friday. But we did not see significant student or staff absences on that Friday. So we don't believe we've crossed a threshold for Diwali as well. As the gentleman said, Yom Kippur was on a weekend this year, so we don't have any data for that. Next year, we continue to monitor all of these dates to see if it comes to a time when we would pass the threshold. If we do, that would be something that I would bring to the, to the board and say, we need to make a change to next year's calendar because we've met a threshold in an area that we hadn't met previously. At this time, with the data that we have, we did not meet those, so we are not, the calendar committee is not recommending any changes to the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar as it stands approved. Just out, any questions or about that?
Thank you. I had one question. One of the things that was supposed to happen when we, let me say, when the holidays were no longer accounted for, was that there would not be assessments given or major homework or any of that, either on the day of or day after. Can you confirm if that happened?
Well, I can confirm that we worked very hard to educate our staff not to do that. We sent multiple reminders to them, clarifying the guidelines. I want to say that if any student experienced something like that and they talked about that in advance, that that would have been changed and corrected. If something happened that we don't know about, we would want to correct that for the future. So I believe, yes, we, we followed that very closely. I did not receive any concerns about staff not following that. Bryant, you're kind of nodding your head. So I, I do believe that's in place.
I can speak a little more specifically to that because I, it was kind of a, kind of a pet project of mine. I, I was, I had a meeting with Becky, actually, leading up to Rosh Hashanah, kind of put forth some of my concerns. Both Becky and Ray, as well as other people on the district administrative team, kind of allayed my fears for anything going wrong, whether that was not having proper coverage or, you know, faculty perhaps not being informed adequately of the expectations. And my expectations were far exceeded. I especially want to thank Larry Barn for his hard work in communicating expectations with faculty. He did a lot of educating around, not just that first holiday that we encountered in our, in our academic calendar, but other, other holidays that will follow. I think the district took a really proactive approach to this. And even though it, at times, felt like it was a very emotional issue for a lot of members in our community, I think it ultimately, the day went spectacularly well. And as, as a, you know, representative of sorts in the community, I have not heard a single complaint or a single, heard about anyone who's had a single issue. So thank you so much for really prioritizing this for, you know, Jewish community. I only, of course, speak for myself, but I think I can go out on a limb. But additionally, I know we'll do good equitable work for other minority religious, religious groups in our community, so thank you.
I'm going to say the hypothetical of everybody can make a mistake. In case there is a mistake in the scheduling, and just so people are listening, a student does have the option to either retake, resubmit. So what should a student do? First, have their conversation with their instructor, teacher, explain to them they were on a religious holiday, and they are offered at least the same amount of time or time plus, and that we have a mechanism in place so that should something, you know, mistakes happen.
Yep.
They, there is some kind of recourse that the student has to have that.
Absolutely. And if the student's uncomfortable talking to their teacher directly, that can be to a counselor or a department chair, who, a trusted adult, we will, whoever they feel is a good advocate for them, parent making a phone call, but we will, as a system, we have very clear language, very clear guidelines, and we will make sure that the staff is complying with those things. Yep.
And just to reiterate, the guidelines are published on the district website. So if anybody is looking for what the guidelines have been since we approved the operational calendar last year, those can be found on the D128.org website.
So if there's nothing else on twenty-five, twenty-six, we moved to twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is a funky calendar. That is the technical term. It is one of the years when Memorial Day falls on the very last day of May. So what that did, if you just applied our traditional sort of calendar, we would have gotten out of school on Thursday, the twentieth of May, and had a full week before the Memorial Day holiday. And for the calendar committee, both the staff, even the students and parents, that felt early. And so what was looked at was, could we move that end date back a week to get out adjacent to the Memorial Day holiday like we are accustomed to? Doing that, though, would add five days that we would have to make up for to keep our total count at one-seventy-eight. So we did consider moving the start of school date back a week. The problem with doing that is that if you do that, you get vastly imbalanced first semester and second semester. And so you would get approximately, something along the lines of like eighty-three days first semester and ninety-five days second semester. And we have a lot of semester-length courses, that that difference is not desirable because students get a very different experience. The other thing that was voiced was the IHSA competition schedule begins that first week in August, on August 3rd. So most of our families, many of our, not most maybe, but many of our families are back on that date. They're not traveling for vacations that week because they're, either have fall athletes or fall marching bands or fall activities that have started before school. So for our committee, moving the schedule back a week was not desirable. So what we did was, we took those five days, we took one of those days and we put them in October 12th for Indigenous Peoples' Day. That is a holiday that we did not observe this year, but we would put it in place for twenty-five, twenty-six.
And just to be clear, Indigenous Peoples' Day is observed on the same?
As Columbus Day.
As Columbus Day.
So it's Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Would be on the same day.
Yes. The twelfth of October in twenty-twenty-six. We added an extra day to the winter break. So instead of coming back on Monday, January 4th, students and staff would return on Tuesday, January 5th. Gives just an extra day after the winter break. We added a day bef, we added Casimir Pulaski Holiday Inn on March 1st as a day off of school. We added the Friday before spring break as a extended day for spring break. About, many, many students and families leave to travel early on spring break. This was a way to give that day off and not have it have a significant disruption on the school day. And then we had one extra day, so we put in sort of what would be considered like a floating day off at the end of April, on April 26th. Rather than take these five days and put them all in one block chunk of time, we split them up to create kind of some breaks throughout the school year. That allows us to end school on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, and still maintain our hundred and seventy-eight days and to have balance between first semester and second semester.
And when is graduation, the twenty-seventh?
We haven't set that date yet with the contracts, but we would be shooting for the twenty-seventh of May.
And I think that was another piece that came into play when you look at the Now Arena. So the Now Arena, right now, we are set typically for the Thursday before Memorial Day. And there's a lot of other schools in the area, District Forty-Six Stevenson, District Two-Eleven, that they use the Now Arena. And if you kind of base it off of that Memorial Day, we're anticipating that the date that they would extend to us again would be the twenty-seventh. The other thing that we looked at is, going back to November, we, the law is not in place. They just kind of keep doing it every two years. But November 3rd would be the gubernatorial election, and the last time we had the, just like tomorrow, we had the day off for the national, the state election, they had schools close that. Now, again.
State of Illinois requires that.
State of Illinois, yeah. And, and again, they haven't put it in place, but we are all anticipating. If not, you, and they don't require us, you would look at, to like Veterans Day, November 11. But again, because you're creating this calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven, the calendar committee will meet again next fall, which means we would have data from Eid in the spring. We would have data from Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur again to look at and make our decision. And I looked real quickly at Diwali this past Friday. We had four staff members that took Friday as a religious day for Diwali. So.
This, this is very informative. And since we'll be voting on this at the board meeting in two weeks, I would like to ask that we get the same presentation, the same information that we're having tonight repeated again before it's brought for action. I think for transparency's sake, it's something that I would appreciate, and I think that a lot of people in the community would appreciate, all the helpful information that you provided.
It's a good idea, absolutely.
The other, another caveat to look at, in the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar, we are also taking other assumptions in place. You are ahead of the Regional Office of Education in planning. So, you know, the dates of winter break, we're going off of our history. The date of spring break, we're going off of our history and knowledge of the Regional Office of Education. Your Teacher Institute on October 9th, your Teacher Institute on February 12th, all correlate with what we think the Regional Office of Education does. So we're anticipating that. That's why you come back again next fall, and you can make those minor tweaks if you have to for those days.
And the, the foundational districts, they have our twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. And then as soon as, if the board passes the twenty-six, twenty-seven, we would give them that so that they, if they so chose, they could align and they would have two years' worth of D128 calendars to look at.
No other comments? Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the twenty-five, twenty-six curriculum proposals.
Need some oxygen over here. Oof. Yes. So the curriculum proposals, just give a very brief summary. You've got them all in front of you. There were no new courses this year, but part of that was because the focus of our curriculum work was really to expand and modify some of our existing courses to be more aligned with our Exploring Multiple Pathways initiatives, and to create greater consistency between what is offered at Vernon Hills and what is offered at Libertyville High School. So the majority of what you see are in the Career Technical Education Department. We are eliminating some courses that were very low enrollment from year after year and were never able to run, to combine them with other courses in the electives. That way, you have a few small courses that gather a few students of interest. We put them together so that the course will actually run. And the way that those courses would be designed would be, students would have a wide range of experiences in them. The example of that is the iOS app development. We had a beginner class and an advanced class. Each one was enrolling just a few students. The teacher, we worked with the instructors, they said, no, we can teach one iOS app class to advanced-level students and beginners in the same space at the same time. So that was a course modification, which we think will be able to provide really good curriculum for students and be in a healthier way where it would actually run from year to year. We also are extending the Project Lead the Way courses that are in place at Libertyville to Vernon Hills High School. This is an example of dual credit options and kids being able to receive college credits for taking coursework that is non-AP. There's a name change. The Project Lead the Way, they had a capstone course called Engineering Design and Development, EDD. I don't think they liked the way EDD was playing out in terms of the name, so they changed it to PLTW Project Lead the Way Capstone. It's the same course, but just a name change there. The other course modification was to accounting. Our business department wants to create not only business courses that generate more of, they, our business courses are a lot about owning a business and the entrepreneurial side. They wanted to start to build out the finance side of our business courses. And so the belief is that by creating a foundations of accounting course that is a semester and open to freshmen through seniors, it'll attract more students earlier. Right now, our honors, our intro to accounting is in honors, and it is a year-long course. We would still have a year-long advanced-level accounting that would be in honors, but the intro course will be a semester to draw more students into it, more flexibility for students. And the idea is to catch students earlier as we continue to build out our finance pathway because our next career pathway that will be coming before you will be business and finance. That will be the next one that the, the district is bringing forward. So we're already doing some of the downfield kind of preparation for that to be ready to go. With that, that's kind of the general overview. On the dual credit, I do want to highlight, we took our honors computer science course and converted that to a dual-credit computer science course. So in an honors, students get a grade bump. In the dual credit, they get a grade bump, but they also get credit at a junior college or a college/university that we partner with. So this is a plus. And the next pathway with business and finance is going to be computer science. And so this will help can build out our computer science pathway as well.
The dual-credit courses listed, are they primarily with CLC or they with any other schools?
They're, they are other schools as well. So primarily CLC, and CLC's been doing an excellent job of making it easier to get courses aligned for dual credit. There's some roadblocks that are, the, the county is working on. But there's also like North Park, there is Concordia. So as we're seeing more dual-credit expand nationwide, more and more universities are offering different programs. And so we have access to wider range for dual-credit options.
Okay, maybe some of those other schools don't have as many roadblocks as the?
That is correct. Yeah, it's.
Lake Forest College, Trinity.
Yeah, I forgot Lake Forest College, right? That's another one. So any other questions or things I can answer about the, I just want to emphasize that, you know, teachers and departments work on these. They work on them, they bring them forward. These are reviewed at the building level by a building-level administration team, then brought to district-level administration. That allows both the building and the district to ask questions that are then sent back to the departments and the teachers for revision, discussion. Vernon Hills is in discussion on all of these with Libertyville. And what you get is kind of a consensus of our recommendations for courses and modifications that would benefit students.
I, I appreciate that, and it's definitely a noticeable amount of progress, bringing parity between the course offerings at both buildings. So thank you for that work.
I second that. Two really good things. One is really nice to see the dual credit and lots of interesting classes and starting the, and continuing parity between two schools is really good. It's a good job.
Okay, I'm going to take that lull as an opportunity to move forward. Thank you for the curriculum proposals, well explained. And we'll move on to the communication platform recommendation. So I guess I turn it to Mary.
It's me. Well, thank you. I look forward to going through this recommendation for a communication platform for the district. We are hoping that it will lead us to be able to move forward with a website redesign as well as consolidation of many of our communication tools. Could you go to slide two, please? Thank you. Thank you. Um, so this visual is kind of what our communication tools look like right now. Uh, with all good intention, we currently are just using a lot of formats that are kind of disconnected from each other. They have different, uh, levels of translation capabilities and they just require different oversight and workflows. Um, just to give you a little idea of what we're using for website right now, we use a service called School Status, which we've had about seven years. Um, for newsletters, we've been using Smore. For two-way communication, we use Remind. We've had that about six years. Mass Notification is School Messenger, which I think we've had at least ten years. And, um, and then Acquia, which is our website monitoring tool. So a little background on how we got to where we are today. Um, we used to employ a full-time webmaster prior to twenty-sixteen. That person resigned and ironically, a month later, we received a complaint from the Department of Justice, uh, related to our website and it not being ADA compliant. So we had some accessibility issues. And, um, the word rapid is in italics there. We went through a very rapid vendor selection and rebuild of all of our websites to make them compliant to what we have today. So flash forward seven years later, we did our communication audit, which gave us the recommendations that you see there. Uh, one of them being them stating that current best practice says that websites should be revamped approximately every three years, which as I said, we're at year seven. Um, and that's just in order to adapt to technology and keep up with trends and the different needs of our users. They recommended a current site refresh, which we did over the summer with some temporary fixes to get us through to, until we could redesign. And then the full redesign recommendation for twenty-four, twenty-five. And, um, I want to talk a little bit about the review process that we went through. And this was overseen by myself, Temple Murphy, who is our I T director, and Kate Isabella, who is our tech integration specialist. And Kate has joined us this evening. If we have any additional questions, we, um, want to put her away. Um, so in the spring, we did an internal review of what local districts, um, and, and some not-so-local districts have for their website, what vendors they're using. Um, we got, the three of us received some feedback from our professional associations and our colleagues. What are they using? What do they like? What do they not like? The summer, um, Kate and I had the opportunity to present at the National Enspira Seminar, which gave us the opportunity to also, uh, meet with several communication vendors. While we were there, um, had some very thorough discussions and presentations from several of them. And through the in-person demonstrations, we, we learned the importance of how much a single platform would, um, make to, to our district and just make it easier and easier to work with, easier to manage all around. So this fall, we narrowed the field of vendors to four. And we brought together a team of key leaders and people across the district who have their hands on the website and a lot of our tools on a regular basis. And we had them participate in a half-day process where we had presentations by the four top vendors. And I want to give a little shout out to, um, the folks named on the screen there who were part of that team, um, again, representing not only users, but all different aspects from athletic, student organizations, um, just soup to nuts. The, um, the, the questions that we had them answer after the, the review was basically, how robust did they see the capabilities of the different vendors? And we had them, uh, complete a form that rated everything from the level of robust use, the ease of use, um, translation services that are available through all the different, um, not just the website, but all the tools. Um, how will it let us better assist people who are going to be using the website to make their posts, um, accessible and compliant? So we don't get in any trouble with, with that area. And also, how, how can we consolidate all these different tools that we're using? So after we received all of that feedback, we, uh, sat down, met with the vendors again, narrowed it down to our, to, to the two that got the highest ratings, both from our, our small team and the large team. And we had them present to us again. We really wanted to make sure we got this right. And tonight I would like to, um, share that we would like to recommend that the district move to Final Site. And, um, I have all the reasons outlined there, but basically it gives us a very good consolidation of tools. Um, and, and an addition of a district branded mobile app. So not just a mobile responsive website, but also an actual app. Um, Smore, which we've been able to use as our newsletters, is also integrated on the platform. It has a two-way communication tool, which would replace Remind, used in, in the same way, um, as well as a notification system for, um, mass notifications. And it has a lot of built-in monitoring tools that will assist the people that will be posting to the website and ultimately to the app. Um, the website designs that we have to choose from are, are just really amazing, um, features that we can add. It's cost-conscious, we'll be saving some money, um, as you'll see on my next slide. Um, it has improved and much more consistent translation capabilities. It uses a tool called Weglot, which instead of, um, Google, um, Google Translate, pick your, pick your language and this massive list of languages drops down. This will give us the choice to work with like our five top languages initially. We can add more if we'd like. But instead of just one translation feature, it will take in, I think it's about five? I'm looking at Kate. I think it's five different translation services that it combines to give it a, a much more robust, realistic translation. Um, enhanced analytics. It integrates with our power school system, which just means we're going to have much more seamless, um, uh, staff, parent, student accounts. And Final Site has over twenty years of their, of website experience. They are pretty much the leader in school websites. And here's our cost comparison. Um, for the initial setup and redesign of the website, that's the sixty-four fifty that you see, the top-left number. The annual fee going forward, which would be again, all the tools that I mentioned, uh, would be twenty-five thousand nine hundred. If you look in the right column, that's a list of all the tools we are currently using, which you can see it comes in a, um, thirteen, oops, I have the number written down. One thousand six hundred and thirty-eight less than what we're currently paying. So the, uh, the contract that is being proposed is also in the board packet and, um, has been reviewed by our attorneys and Dan. And we had a few questions for them that we sent, sent to them this morning, actually. And we'll, um, be giving you that revision as soon as we have it.
Yeah, just the, so anytime we have a, a big contract like that, we want to take the time to review it. The two particular things is the termination language, um, that we're clarifying as well as, I don't remember what the other thing was, but the termination was the bigger piece of language, uh, to clarify with them, so.
Yes. The only other question I have, thank you for watching out for termination language. Uh, the other one was, how many years is this fee for? Is up till twenty-thirty? And is that twenty-five K every year or is there an increase?
Each year.
Okay. Yeah.
It's a fixed, it's a fixed rate for five years. Which I think is great.
We're currently paying over twenty-seven thousand for all those tools. So a little bit of a savings and having it all on one umbrella, under one umbrella.
Just to be clear, the twenty-seven thousand this year, it's going to be more next year.
Yeah.
Because those go up.
And when do those contracts end, that, the existing ones?
We are working on the timing with all of that and we'll, we'll be working with those vendors. Um, I believe all of them are towards the end of the school year. So we'll work for a nice seamless, um, transition.
I would expect some overlap.
Yeah, there'll be some overlap.
So some overlapping costs, just to be safe and not, you can't turn one off and turn the other one on the next day, so.
Right. And we'll be doing this, um, at the beginning of the summer, so won't be middle of the school year.
Mary, thank you for being responsive to so many criticisms of our, of how we're communicating. And sometimes it seems like it's too much and not enough. And this seems to be, so I, I appreciate that we're responding to that. One of the things that I, when I was looking through that I'm still, and I don't know if this is feasible. The person that uses the website the most are the parents.
Mm-hmm.
As a parent. And it is very hard to navigate our website. And would it be feasible? I know you went through this, but from the lens of a parent, prior to us making this kind of a commitment and not, like you said, I don't want to, we don't want to screw this up if we're going to invest this time. Is it possible to, prior to us making this decision, bring parents in to kind of play, to get the same presentation that you got or at least offer it up?
Well, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think we want to take all the work that the team did to select a vendor very seriously. I think what we could consider, and that would be more appropriate, is perhaps before the launch, let different constituents see before the launch and give feedback so that if there are things that need to be tweaked before it rolls out, so that parents can give their input and say, that shouldn't be there, this is missing. I don't understand where this is.
Then maybe I'm not understanding. I understand what you're doing. I, that's why I asked the question. Is it feasible? I, I also want to validate what the committee work did. But the, the reality is, most of the people that utilize our website are our parents. And if they can't navigate it-
Right. But they, they shouldn't be involved in vendor selection. They should be involved in, in-
I don't know. That's why I'm asking the question. Is there that much difference in the platform, the different vendors, that a parent input would not be? I mean, you, you, I didn't meet with the vendors and I'm not trying to question, but just like when we were reading with data, sometimes when we don't have that right lens, and as a parent, I was frustrated, as a community member, sometimes I'm frustrated. And if these people don't have the lens of being that, that role, but now I'm asking you the question. I, would it be beneficial to have a parent input before we're making that vendor selection?
Can I offer to ask that in a slightly different way?
Sure.
No, no offense, but at what point in time, Mary, would parents, other constituents, other people be involved in actually the design work that goes into this? What we're buying here is just a platform. It's the boxes and wires on the inside. At what point in time do they get involved? And I know there's a whole rollout schedule and whatever that goes along with Final Site. So can you sort of maybe explain a little of that?
Absolutely. We will be, um, assigned a design representative? Am I getting that title right, Kate? Close enough? Product, project manager, thank you. And, um, we will start immediately working with them. We would not want to engage all of our parent community or all of our students in selecting every detail of the colors and the fonts and, and that kind of thing. But I think what you're speaking to, Cara, is the, um-
Functionality.
The functionality, the usability, where do I find things? How easy is it to navigate? And what we would, of course, do is use a lot of Final Site's tried and true recommendations that they will share with us, but also as it gets near, you know, more deep into the process, test drive those on some, some people and make sure that we are headed in the right direction. We would also be providing staff with any necessary, you know, professional learning opportunities that they need to, um, be able to be successful users of the product as well.
Maybe could I add just my own, just from participating a bit with that process? The, the vendors that were kind of in that final mix, um, relative to what we have now are night and day different. And so the, the comparison to what we have now is significantly different. And I will say, even with some of those final ones at the end, they all had really beautiful, seemingly easy-to-navigate sites that we could look at and compare to, that the end product, I'll be honest, I couldn't tell a whole lot of the difference. Some of the nuances were the behind-the-scenes things, the integrations that were really super valuable. So I, I, um, they, all of them seemed to be able to produce something extremely well, easy to navigate for the external user from what we, what I could see.
So Dan, I run tons of vendor selection on behalf of my clients. One thing I will suggest, like, most of the vendor selections would perform really, really well when they do the demo. That's what the demo is supposed to be for, to look really good, to look shiny. They are not going to bring things that don't work in a demo. But when you are designing something, it's for certain stakeholders and parents are stakeholders in this, right? So we'll have to figure out some way to involve them in not complete design maybe, but at least somewhere along the process, when we maybe developed an initial draft of the website, to have someone look at it from a user experience perspective, usability perspective. Can they look through it and find the information that they need? Because they are going to be consumers of that platform too, right? It's intended for them to, it's not just intended for the staff, right? It's two-way communication that we're talking about. So we'll have to figure out where we get them involved. Probably not in the tool selection, because that's, that's a little bit nuanced and you'll never be able to make good selections. But there's always tweaks that you can make and we have to involve them at a point where changes can be made when we get feedback, right? Not where, yeah, thank you for the suggestion, but no change can be made.
Of course. We want it to be usable for everybody. That's the whole reason that we're doing this. So of course we would involve them.
And I'm happy to participate in it because this is what I do for a living, right? Run these vendor selections and then do the implementation project, so.
And the vendors that we selected to bring in were the top ones that schools around the nation use. Um, I can't remember the exact numbers, but Final Site is one, you know, they're, they're one of the top ones. Um, they've, there's some that are communication tool providers that are excellent with that and do okay with websites. And, and Final Site has always been the website leader that's done okay with communication. They, they recently acquired Blackboard and they're merging some of those tools and, and they've come up with a really great brand.
So what you're telling me is that the answer is, the difference between the four different vendors is a very nuanced and that the end user would not see that much of the difference. And that's the answer, that no, you don't need the parents for that.
I, I think the list-
The following way perhaps is the users of this platform is not us, it's the people that are generating the communications. So it's appropriate for them to select a tool that works best for them.
Agreed.
But those of us who are outside of that group, we have a vested interest in ensuring that the design is usable and we can get to where we need to. So I think, I think as, I think as you said, Matelech, we have to look at how do you get a core group of parents maybe is the first group that's going to be interested in this, these sites and, and get their feedback and ensure that they can get to where they need to.
Yes.
Um, there's also another thing we do is maybe do a small proof of concept. Before we go and pay them their first bit of fees, we kind of do a small design, make sure they're actually able to do it in reality after contract is signed. And that we don't run into challenges after we get going because we've, like you, have done a lot of these and sometimes they'll say things-
You don't want to back yourself into-
Right. They'll say things at contract signing and then when you go into actual implementation, you find out there are gaps. So if we could weave in a, let's do a proof of concept, do a design session and then we'll move forward, I think that'll be a good exercise.
Well, that was my other question is what kind of support do we get for the twenty-five? I mean, how are they servicing the district? Is it just the access to their platform? I mean, I'm ignorant when it comes to this. So what do you get for the twenty-five-nine?
It, obviously all of the tools that are incorporated with it, but we also have, um, webmas, like a virtual webmaster that we can tap to help us solve, solve any problems or if we, since we don't have a full-time webmaster, um, if we need certain projects that are very hefty, they can, they can assist us with that. We get, I, twenty-five hours, sounds right, thirty? Um, we also have- We also have unlimited support. We have done our homework talking to other districts that are in this area, users that are, you know, very happy with the service, the customer service, the accessibility to all that.
What I want to add to this is that what we're signing for here is the infrastructure to build our communication platform. It's not a specific design, and it's not, doesn't lock us into a specific look and feel or design. That all comes as we implement and as we transition into this. So we shouldn't be concerned about what the parents think about this, because it's a black box. They wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see how the parent interface looks because it hasn't been fully vetted yet. It hasn't been fully designed. That's part of this process going through, because from now until next summer. So it's, it's, what we're buying here is the infrastructure and the capability and the resources behind building our platform to our needs and to be able to customize it to what we need.
And I would be happy to supply you all with links to comparable sites, so the ones that we would, you know, develop for our district, if that would.
I'd also, I know Site's done a lot of work with school districts, and they have many, many, many clients. And is one of the top, you know, in terms of communication tools for school districts like ours. So I think they have the capacity to do it. It's now up to us to, once we, they get the go-ahead, is to work with them to build the design that really meets what your expectations and everyone's expectations are.
So one more question that I had was around the setup fee. Do we know what all it includes? If they've given you certain demos of like, this is what your website could look like, how much of that customization is included versus you choose from these three templates and that's what it is?
There's not, there are templates, but they are extensive. Kate, would you have more background on the setup part? If you'd like to come up, or not?
You need to be. Just so that everybody can hear you.
Yeah, if you sit at the microphone, then everybody who's listening online will be able to hear you.
Okay, so the setup fee, I mean, I don't have an itemized list, but essentially, and we have some, so backing up, sorry, this is how I roll. Because it integrates with your question as well. The refresh that we started over the summer, we did start to look at the question of who is the audience for the website, because we didn't feel that was very well addressed. And while we certainly didn't exactly get where we wanted to get to, I do believe that we made some headway on redesigning a little bit for, you know, walking things through. You know, we talked about, I'm the parent of an incoming freshman. What is my path of things that I want to look at? And that is something that we do intend to look at a lot more. That goes to the setup part a little bit, because yes, they're going to supply us with the infrastructure and the tools, but it's going to be what we do with those tools. And that includes, and that's what part of the setup fee would also be about, how much are we migrating of our current content? Because that would be a portion of what that setup fee is going to pay for, taking what we have now on our current website. Because you either start from scratch, which is a huge undertaking, or you migrate at least some of the content. So we would work with the vendor to identify what we think should go, maybe not in the same organization, but what information should go, and integrate with them on all that. So that's some of what that setup is going to be. It's going to be setting up the integration with our Power School system. It's, because it's for all the facets. It's not just for the website. So that's, actually, they've waived quite a bit of fee to get it down to that amount, frankly. So that's going to include all the integration with our Power School system. It's going to include what webpages are we going to take over? Is that going to be in the same format? Or, you know, how are we going to do that? So it's quite a bit involved in that, because it's, you know, taking, how are we changing our, you know, how are the communications going to be set up? How is the website going to be set up? So it's a, I mean, frankly, it's a pretty reasonable fee for the number of different products that we're actually going to be addressing there. Does that cover the question?
Can I ask, there is a statement of work. If you go to the first page of the contract, and then you click on, in a pricing summary, there's a link, Finalsite.com, statement of work. I don't know if that answers the question about what's the scope of services, but it seems to me to detail what the work is, especially as far as all of the setup. Content services, data and integration, training, theme selection, implementation.
It's pretty detailed. Five pages. But I think that answers your question. Thank you. It seems like we're willing to support the moving forward with this with some caveats. We'd like some sort of proof of product statement in the contract, if that's possible. Is that possible? Like, we haven't signed a contract yet, so that's.
So sorry, can you just repeat this sentence? Use a.
I can.
I think that we're willing to move forward with this. I'm willing to support the recommendation from the group. But there was a question about whether or not we can have some sort of proof of product written into the contract so that we have some idea whether or not it works before we've put out all of the money for it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the cost comparison. It doesn't tell you when, it doesn't tell you when we pay these fees. Do we pay them? Some providers want you to be paid on day one, and some want you to be paid when you go live. And like, that $6,000 would be paid to them at the end of everything being set up and we saying, yep, this looks good? Or are we paying them when we start the project? So I think, maybe I have to look at the.
Trying to remember, I think, I think part of the fee is you pay upfronts.
So the setup fee you're paying upfront, just based on the scale you're seeing?
Yeah.
And then the annual fee is you're being charged in July every year.
So in that case, we probably do want to have a proof of concept where they show us, they do something for us before we pay them the whole fee, because we're paying them everything. And, I mean, it's a small amount, so I won't.
So prior to July 1st?
Yeah.
No, so when you look at the setup fee, the setup fee is the first thing that they charge us.
Right.
Right.
Right, so if we write in like a proof of concept in there.
Okay.
Right, maybe migrate, you pick whichever one small portion of the website or one small place in how would it look in the new theme? And have them show us, right? Because it shows there that we get to pick a theme from the theme simulator and be able to simulate how the migrated content would look like, so.
Yeah, I mean, in general, at least where my day job, we don't pay anybody anything unless we get something. So if they set up the site, and it's something we accept, or not to set up the site, but give us the platform, they've given us access, they've connected everything, at that point, we could say, yep, we'll pay you the $6,000, not at the start of the contract when we actually haven't gotten anything from them. You could also just change it to where this is the $6,000 is paid to them when they've given us the setup site.
I think there's a different concept. This isn't a business website where you design it upfront, hand them the design, and they come back with a finished product.
I understand, yeah.
So this is a collaborative, there's going to be a lot of work by these folks that work within the district to actually do some of the organization and design work and things. So to have them commit to a design that we will actually participate in building would be, I don't know what.
No, I wasn't talking about that. I'm saying when they hand over the keys to the kingdom to us, it's got to have some of the, I think, as you were saying, whatever is accounted in their setup fees, they should actually have that done before we make them the pay, before we pay them the money versus at.
Sure.
Versus at contract signing, that's all I'm saying.
I think I understand. And I would say sites, places like Final Site, which has such a strong presence in schools and a strong reputation, I'm, I personally never talked to them, but I'm pretty confident they're not looking to make a short amount, small amount of money really quick from us. They're thinking of a long-term relationship with us. And I would imagine they would be flexible in terms of when we give them that first $6,000. They're not going to sacrifice the $6,000 for the 125, you know, that's later. So I'm sure there's going to be flexibility on their part for that.
Is there anything else? For that? Oh, there we go. All right, moving on to my last agenda item, the IASB resolutions. And in an effort to streamline things, did anybody have any problems with any of the recommendations that were made by the IASB? Or if everybody thinks that the recommendations that were made were fine, then we can just move forward?
I thought all the recommendations that the committee made were appropriate. I don't have any items that I'd like to pull out.
Agreed.
I agree. In fact, I think this is the first year I feel that way.
Yeah. So if we have consensus, then that brings us to the next thing. Is everybody happy with Jim continuing to be our representative at the IASB?
Yes, please.
Jim, congratulations. You are the.
That's good, because I'm already signed up.
There is one other thing, and the IASB is going to be changing their constitution to, they want to update it so that the new Roberts rules are in effect. So the most recent Roberts rules. We also have been asked to say that Jim is able to vote on our behalf and that we agree with that resolution. I agree with that resolution, and I want Jim to be our guy.
Yes.
Everyone good? All right, I'm all done. Let's go to our future agenda items. They are listed. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to put on the future agenda items?
Well, it certainly doesn't have to be in November, December. But at some point, I'd like to see the policies for the ed tours on a future agenda. But you'll let us know when it's realistic to fit in with all the other work that you're doing.
When there's nothing happening and it's quite a.
Right, when we have no agenda items, that'll be the perfect time.
Outstanding. Is there anything else? And this meeting is adjourned. Dr. Batson?
We'll take a five-minute break here, maybe a six-minute.
Program and Personnel Committee meeting adjourned. Program and Personnel Committee meeting adjourned. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next.
We're live. I'd like to call to order the November 4th Facilities and Finance Committee meeting. We already did the pledge earlier. And so we'll open the floor for invitation for public comment. Did anyone sign in? Do we have? Just come on up and, yeah, that's all right.
Any microphone?
Any microphone. Four microphones, no waiting.
Hello, okay. Hi, guys. It's, my name's Amy Franz. So this is a little off the cuff again tonight. Sorry. Kind of stepped in after meeting with students. I just want to make a couple of observations. One, kind of hearing all the AP scores and hearing that data is amazing. And I think it's such an accomplishment and a testament to the excellent instruction and the coursework that we're offering. I do want to just point out, though, that that is from this past year. And we know that most students who are enrolled in AP courses are very high achievers. And they are people that are fairly independent learners. They're probably, you know, high striving learners. So when I look at some of the other data, and maybe this is kind of my wheelhouse because, you know, I am a special educator. And I look at the numbers for our EL students and I look at the numbers for our special populations, which again, these are a sizable percentage of our students. I just want to make sure we're kind of considering as we're building out the MTSS, which again, we're kind of building the plane while we're flying it, that we think about what are the specific ways that we're going to really focus on helping these students grow. And I heard you guys, I heard, you know, Dr. K and a few other people mentioned that that is our focus and we're going to do it. But I think being really thoughtful and specific about how are we going to do it? What types of interventions? We're kind of testing the waters with lab courses. I don't know if we're doing like timed and data-driven interventions. Are we, are we collecting that data? Are we seeing how that's really supporting these kind of more, our typical learners? So not our really high-level learners, but how are kids doing in heterogeneous? You know, we took off TeamTod and we're offering this for ninth graders. But what about the rest of our learners? Because I see a lot of those learners, 10th graders, 11th graders, 12th graders, who are in more rigorous courses now and they may be struggling a little bit. And that may be why we're seeing some of the falloff on our standardized test scores. Okay? So I, that's just, you know, my thoughts. I would just love to see a really specific plan, like what types of data are we going to collect? Because obviously PSAT data is not enough. It's not specific enough. And we need to be kind of measuring what interventions are we doing and what's working for these subgroups. I think that's very important when we talk about inclusion and equity should be for all groups at the high school. Everyone should have an opportunity to access the education at a place that works for them. Thank you for considering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm right out.
Good evening, Marnie Navarro again. Thank you so much. Those were really substantive presentations. And I just wanted to make a couple of points. I'm really glad to hear, we're going to hear more about District 128's version of APA and heterogeneous classrooms in the future. A lot of us are really interested in that. We've been invested for many months in it. We're very concerned about it. I do think Dr. K made a good point. You know, he said we've always had open enrollment. I think the community needs to know that. There never was closed enrollment or an obstacle racial or otherwise to any student in District 128 taking a more rigorous course. So to the extent that was a miss, you know, a belief or it's just, that's just not the case. It wasn't the case. It never was the case. So I hope that as we look at this, we look at it really critically. Because as I've emailed you all, we didn't have to do this at all, much less in this fashion. So let's make sure, as Amy mentioned, what we're doing makes sense for our actual students and that there's metrics to measure the success for all learners at all levels. Secondly, I wanted to briefly mention this, the data that we saw are the graphics, the demographic aggregation by the, by the different demographic groups. I think this is a very problematic demonstrative for numerous reasons. And one of them is, you know, you stated, Dr. K, that we wanted to eliminate the disproportionality. But unfortunately, these couple of graphics do not do that. Because for, for example, the African-American black or African-American students where it shows 47%, you know, meeting state standards. But we know from Mr. Varn's prior presentations that 1% of students at LHS and 1% of students at Vernon Hills High School are African-American. That's 2% of students. That's 66 students out of 3,300 students. But when you look at this graphic, it jumps out like, oh, my gosh, this is so inequitable. And I think that's a, that's a big problem. Because for the last three and a half years, we have literally put millions towards a diversity and equity and inclusion policy, including a full-time director of equity and inclusion, two full-time equity coaches, hundreds of thousands of dollars on EOS, which is totally inapplicable to our district, Tony Frontier, expensive outside consultants. And so if, if that really, Ms. Drumke asked an excellent question. Where's the data to show over three and a half or four years that the millions we've put towards these 66 students have yielded results? It's not there. At least it's not here. This does not paint a complete picture. And, you know, and again, you look at this and you say, well, look at our students receiving special services. Only 54% of them are meeting state criteria. But if that's 10 to 20% of our student population, that's 330 to 660 students. That's a much larger, larger population. And these all fall in the same reporting categories. As Amy said, I agree. Our equity work has to be equity for all, all subgroups, not just a chosen one and we devote millions towards them. And then, I think we all believe, I certainly do, in equity and equity work. But where's the return on investment? That's my question. And then, you know, and I, and I pointed this out to Dr. Herman in May, March, when I first met with her. There's other factors at play. By her own stats, the basis of our strategic plan, you know, African-American students at that time had a 48.6% absentee, chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism. I query, are they not meeting the state standards because of race or because they're absent half of the time? There's other factors that should have been looked into, both qualitative and quantitative. And let's do number of students, not just percentages.
The three minutes is well passed. Can you wrap up?
Thank you. And then I think Amy hit a lot of points with regard to the, the AP numbers. I just wanted to be clear that, you know, we need to make a student-centric analysis. Let's see our 24, 25 data. A lot more kids have been moved up into AP classes. I'd be interested to see how those test scores come out. And we should be focused on the students, not just stats and optics for District 128, that we get more credit for saying more kids took more tests. You have to look at their experience in the class. Just putting kids into a more rigorous curriculum doesn't mean that anything good comes out of it if they can't handle it and they're out over their skis and we lack the structural, organizational MTSS to support them. That's where we want our dollars spent, return on investment for our actual students. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any topics for the Facilities and Finance Committee? Okay?
Good evening again, John Hetzel. I thought the presentations tonight were meaningful and I'm appreciative of that. I have a couple of questions, though. Why is the STAR data not provided to parents? Why did I have to request that information to get it? I'd like that answered at some point. Why must it be requested? I addressed this previous in public comment and never received an explanation myself and parents want to know. Just advise. APA increased enrollment due to testing thresholds lowered to 50% of the maximum, 780, and auto placement without proper communication to families. So that's one of the reasons why the APA and the AP classes increased. Why are we using last year data when PSAT scores were available last month? Solar, we'll come back to the solar in a second. I got something on that. APA, make sure that you communicate better to the community on how it works and the metric for placement. Because last year, the metric was dropped down considerably to about a 50% score of the 780 on the PSAT. And when are we going to learn the metrics used for the ACT and the APA impact and those thresholds? Please advise soon. Performance benchmark slide number eight. Happy to report state grade bar comparison. But when you have over 15% of that being skewed by Chicago Public Schools, which, believe me, it looks incredible, Lisa, as you said, how great we look, and that is good. But let's be honest, CPS is a train wreck. And at 15% of the students, how about we extract that data out of the CPS students and take a look at it on an overall state level without that? Tom, you also noted that the lower subgroups get more support on PSAT and SAT, but upper end subgroups don't have that same access. You said you were going to try to, that that was going to be, try to make more accessible in the future. But I'd like you to clarify that. How is that equitable? Why is it one subgroup gets more support than the others? Like, my daughter could use additional help for that type of test. And she's not in that subgroup. Slide 13, performance math. The data did not look good and that slide was breezed over really quickly, literally about 30 seconds. Why not address the elephant in the room? The math scores were not good. Lastly, a website, well, this isn't lastly because I got to come back to one more thing. Lastly, website very common to use, have a user beta test before a launch. And that means some parents just using it, working it before the launch. It's very common. I've been around plenty of websites and have a few of my own right now. All right, so the other thing I might ask is the solar panel. In January, I sent an email to you all. I have three friends that are all executive C-suite in big construction companies, solid. You can look them all up. I gave you Aldridge and another one, Hill Mechanical. And they all have dealt with solar panels on roofs. My question at that time as well as now, did we prepare the roofs for solar panels if we're going to move forward? Because if not, it'll cost 20% more approximately on a million-dollar roof on Vernon Hills, for instance. So that could be a $200,000 bump to us now to add the solar panels. Also, did the warranty get adjusted? As I pointed out in that email in January, that there was a condition that you're going to add solar panels later. Otherwise, that warranty could be void. I'd like to know if those things were accounted for. Because if we go forward with solar panels and those weren't, you just cost the taxpayers 150, 200 grand and you might have blown the warranty. That was sent to the board in January. Thank you.
It looks like nobody else is here, so we'll move on with the agenda. Thank you. Solar panels, speaking of.
Yeah, so We, sorry. Yeah, last time we talked about this was in May. And so what we talked about then was what, what, essentially, what financial framework are we talking about in terms of, is it paying for cash? Is it doing a lease? Is it doing a short-term PPA or a long-term PPA? What the data showed us at that point is a long-term TP, long-term PPA is probably our best option, given the conditions of the district and the attractive rates to that. So where we're at in that process is that process is in my court now. And the step, the step we are at is that we need to develop an RFP for this and then get it out in the street to receive proposals from prospective contractors and companies. And so that's in my court to do. And in terms of a timeline of what we're talking about, my best sense right now is I think January is probably when we can get that out, given some of the other things that are happening in the next couple of months. So that's, that's where we're at. And that's what the status is and what the plan is going forward. Is everybody good with PPA? You know what power purchase agreements are? All right.
Is there, from a timing perspective, is there an optimal time to put an RP out, get, do the construction, that kind of thing? I'm assuming installation over the summer, so it's less disruptive. Is there anything we should be aware of?
Based on my understanding of how, how it all works is the sooner the better. That's really the overarching
Like, is there a lead time? Like, if we talk about it in January, do we have hopes of, if everything goes right, we think this is a good idea of getting anything done next summer? Or is it a longer-term thing?
I, I, I don't know. You know, I, I imagine putting solar panels on roofs is not nearly as invasive as replacing the roof. So when we're replacing the roof, we can't have anybody in that building, you know, under that roof or where that roof would be. I don't believe solar panels are the same. So I don't know how intrusive of an installation, something like that would be. So I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't know.
Okay, no problem. More to come.
A little bit by memory, I remember there were pictures of roofs there, roof sections where you get sunlight and would be most optimal. I cannot clearly remember those, if those roof panels are already ready to take on solar or did we have to get them solar-ready? I believe as we replaced roofs, you know, we asked the question of, are we making them solar-ready? And I believe the answer has been yes.
Yeah, the, I mean, so what you're talking about is, you know, Vernon Hills has many roofs, just like this building does. What we, what we had shared in previous meetings, and they're all in board book to go back and see, not necessarily every roof is ideal for solar based on the size of the roof and even like how much sunlight it's going to be. So if you remember at Vernon Hills, for example, they have that big, I don't know what it's called, that thing. That blocks another part of the roof for a very significant portion of the day. And so it wouldn't really be worth it to put solar panels on the, on some of those roofs. So the engineers worked with Mark to identify which roofs would be able to do that and which would be good. The big one would be the West Gym that was installed. And that was absolutely designed and built with extra steel and conduit to hold. That's going to be your, your largest return in terms of solar is going to be on that roof for sure. And then as we, and so the idea is, you know, where there's like a catch-up period that we can kind of get as many roofs ready as possible. And then as we, as you know, for our summer And then as we, as you know, for our summer capital, like we're in a multi-year process of replacing the roofs at Vernon Hills. As we replace them, that our system can be modular, that we can just keep adding on rather than having to go to an RFP and have a potentially different provider for every single roof. Like, that is not at all what we are interested in doing. So those are some of the thoughts. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Yeah, that did. And can you remind me of what that looked like for Libertyville? I remember Vernon Hills being more productive from the energy standpoint than LHS, but don't remember the specifics.
Yeah, there's far fewer roofs at LHS, but I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. Again, we, the drawings should be in our stuff from previous meetings, but it is significantly less, but it's not, I don't think it's insignificant. That'll be clear. Like, it's not like we put these in and now we're off the grid. Like, they're not going to generate that kind of power. It's going to, it's still going to be significant, but it's not going to be like we're off-grid now.
We also didn't consider any roofs that weren't ready. Like, there were some that would not be able to handle the weight that we didn't, we're not saying we want to shore those up so that we can, but we're just not.
Correct. That would not be an efficient use of resources, for sure.
So we are looking at roofs that A, are ready structurally to take this on and B, actually have sunlight where you can actually produce energy.
Yep. And I would say the roofs are also the ones that have been recently replaced. So we're not going to put panels on roofs that we're planning to replace in the near future that we don't think that would be efficient use of resources.
I know this is back in February when we talked about it, but we, you set forth like three options, a leasing, a lease back, or just a buy outright, right? And we had said that the, probably the best financial decision was the lease for a certain amount of time, right? Can you?
So my best recollection is May was the last time we talked about this. And that was showing some of the analysis that a long-term PPA would probably be worth it. And the basic idea is round numbers. We pay right now around 10 cents a kilowatt hour. All right? We believe that with incentives and how everything works, that we might be able to get a price that's half that per kilowatt hour. So basically, so PPA, really what you're doing is you're actually just buying electricity from a company that is going, that agrees to install panels. And you're agreeing to buy the electricity from whatever they generate from those panels at that rate. And so the long-term rate of that is what we thought would be in the best interest, given the conditions of our financials and just the conditions of the different agreements that might change based on different incentives in place at different times. And so we thought that was particularly the most attractive, especially because we happen to be facing this year. Every district has to face this at some point. This was our year that we had to reset to market rates and our electricity is up 40% this year. And that is extremely significant. And so going with something like that, I think, is absolutely in our best interest, both financially and all the other considerations as well.
Which meeting did we talk about at last, did you say?
My best recollection is May.
May committee?
Probably, May committee.
The last, when I did the search, was February 12th. And that had the schematic of the two buildings, but.
Yeah, if you go to May 13th, Facilities and Finance Committee, there's an agenda item for solar update with some attachments. And talking about the PPA would be the best long-term option there.
Anybody else? Okay, more to come. Beverage services agreement.
Yeah, I was, I got like the revised changes back this morning, so I wasn't quite ready to get that into our agenda packet. And so we're, we've had, again, this is not any different information than I gave you last time, but I'm just going to restate it. We've had a long-term partnership with Coke. We issued an RFP, really basically between Coke and Pepsi. And Pepsi is the one that we would like to move forward with. We're working on the contract with them right now. And so as soon as I have, I have got the changes back from our side, as soon as I have a final agreement, I'll send that to you. We would look to have this approved in November so that they could start in December is our timeline we would love. And they will, basically, they have to, they would have to switch out all the vending machines. Like, we'd have to, there's a transition period that would have to go through to do that.
Is it possible that if you do obtain the contract that you're recommending prior to the board meeting packet going out, you could share that with the board? Because I know that several of our members do appreciate a longer chance to review contracts before, two days before, to review them and ask questions about them sooner than two or three days before the meeting.
Yep, absolutely. So when I said, as soon as I get it, I'll send it to you, I literally meant I will email it, we'll email it to the board so you have that as soon as I have it. The changes I got back today were extremely minor and I don't think that they'll be anything materially different. And so I'm anticipating I'd have that really soon. I was really hoping to have it for today, but I just, it wasn't, just didn't quite work out.
Do you think it would be appropriate at that time to also share the difference in cost between our current contract and the one that you're recommending?
Yeah, I'll have all that information there as well. The short answer is it's, with Pepsi, it's less money upfront and it's potentially more money down the road. And money wasn't the only thing. It's also the quality of the service, things like that. Gatorade is a really, really popular thing, if you haven't heard of it. So there's a lot of things that go into it that's more than just the money. The money does matter for sure.
Is Gatorade new?
I just, just that, I didn't totally realize Gatorade was attached to Pepsi. And so that was a new thing for me. So I'll give you all that information.
Do you anticipate that there will be any costs to the district associated with that transition from one company to the other? Or is that typically absorbed by the newer vendor or?
So the only, so our relationship with these districts don't cost us anything. The reason why the board has to approve it, because there's a state law that says any contract designed to generate more than $1,000 requires board approval. It's a state law. So that's why we're bringing it to you, is because we absolutely anticipate it'll generate more than $1,000. And so in terms of transition costs, there, nothing. But that's how, I mean, think about how soda works. It's everybody else that essentially pays for it because they're the ones going to be buying the drink, not just soda, but other drinks that are there. So I don't anticipate anything. The only thing I could possibly foresee is if their vending machines somehow use more electricity than the Coke ones, but I, I don't think that'll be.
But the intent of this is we get money. It doesn't cost us money. We earn money off these contracts.
Correct. Yeah. But if this is, I mean, that it is, the money is not insignificant. There are things, considerations that are far more than the money that definitely matter in terms of service, meaning you could get as much commission as you want, but if there's never soda in the machines to sell, doesn't really matter. Those are the kinds of things we're talking about. So those are all things that weighed into the process and the proposal and going with it.
Makes sense. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Tax levy, our favorite topic.
So we're in the final stretches of our levy process. What you have this time is the resolutions. I will say I had, I sent these off for review and we don't need to have all the different resolutions. The counsel we got was we can stick with our, there's a main one really that lists them all, and that is legally sufficient. And so if y'all are comfortable with it, that's what I would pursue for next time, that it's really just one resolution that will cover all of them rather than having to have all these separate resolutions. And so I think that'll be simple, more straightforward, rather than, and especially year over year, updating seven resolutions versus one will be a lot easier to do.
Anybody have any great desire for seven resolutions?
Okay. Sonal likes to sign on.
How much do we like Dan, I guess? Less is more.
Okay. Anything else? Just a brief update?
Yeah, the numbers are the same. Sorry, the data is the same. None of that has changed, still a 4.09. And we would expect a 3, off the top of my head, I can't remember the exact number. I don't have the attachment open anymore. But yeah, the numbers are still the same from the last meeting.
Right, isn't that what we said? 3.6 something is what we're expecting.
I think it's closer to 3.8. Well, now, okay. 4.0 for the levy, but what we, what we're expecting to actually be approved for would be 3.78. So that's what we would realistically expect from this. And so we'll see how those, that's still with the $300,000 cushion because again, there's two variables. We won't know until spring and, but the levy has to be submitted to the county clerk by the last Tuesday in December.
All right. So we'll see more on that in two weeks. Future agenda items? Anyone have anything to think about for that? We got budget already starting up before we know it. Okay, anything else? To go to the cause? Okay, we will call the Facilities and Finance, adjourned.